Where, when it comes to the presentation by Mayor Reed Garcia regarding the US Department of Justice Police Report and public comment regarding that, the public will be allowed to speak first regarding that, and then the mayor will follow after the public speaks. So just so we're clear on that. Okay?
Noted.
You can continue with the presentation.
Certainly, Madam President. Moving forward, next on our agenda, we have a presentation. I will have Mr. Arch Liston, Director of Housing and Economic Development, introduce the presentation to me.
Thank you.
Good evening, Council.
Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay, good.
We have a PowerPoint ready, okay. Many questions have come up over the last couple of weeks regarding the EDA grant and the acquisition of the hotel downtown. Some press information has been put out, but we wanted to do a little bit of a public presentation so people are aware of what's happening with it, a little bit of history of it, and how we plan to approach it so we don't impact the community and cost us. So, can we, you ready? Okay. Also, everybody has been provided the RFP that has, it's actually posted on tomorrow morning on the UEZ website, and we'll get it up on the city website as soon as we can. Okay, we ready? All right, start with.
Mr. Garcia, please reflect that Council Vice President Figueroa Kettinburg is present.
Oh, she's with Mark.
Thank you.
All right, the location of the hotel. You can see, you can see that. All right, we're looking at the hotel, 197 rooms. And involves, and I'm not going to read this to you, it's 18, almost 18,000 square feet. And it is basically the center in the downtown and within the district of the Department of Community Affairs, the War Memorial, and not far from the Capitol. When it was built in 1999, and started building in 1999, and opened in 2002, it was a facility that really brought a lot of people into the community. It was, it was a place where lobbyists met, it was a place where assemblymen and state senators would go after meetings, they would have before meetings there. It was really a facility that, that made the downtown thrive as part of government. Through some problems with mismanagement and the way it was, I guess, led over the period of time, obviously, there was issues with the business, the occupancy dropped substantially, and it was no longer profitable. So basically, with the closure in 2012, there'd been two or three owners that had the property. There was some interest in flipping the property, but no one could ever come up with a plan that would bring it back to full action to really be a center of the downtown again. The property itself has been negatively impacted over the last 10 years by vagrants, by people taking copper out of the location, and it's been substantially damaged. So the property has depreciated to the point where it, it needs a major retrofit, bringing it back into useful life. What we plan on doing is we have RFPs out, we're going to present them to councils as the redevelopment entity, and we're going to try to get a developer, private public partnership, come in and present their concepts and ideas for what they can do with the hotel. So, there, as you, as you know, being a longtime resident of the city, it, it had a restaurant, had meeting rooms, and along with the 97 rooms. And it was, it was active, and the needs to get it back open, it's going to need to maintain a liquor license, and we're hoping that the, we can get a restaurant to work, you know, a substantial, nice restaurant so people can go downtown, have lunch, we can take people to lunch there, and also for evening meetings. So we're looking to get the whole facility back up and running as that. But the other side of the coin is the economical, the economics of it are the fact that trying to keep a hotel filled, especially in, in an area like this, sometimes runs about a 60% occupancy and won't, won't make it profitable. So there are concepts and ideas we're looking for, and we've seen it in other places where there's been a mixed use, and what I'm calling a mixed use is there's private apartments maybe suggested along with maintaining at least 100 hotel rooms. One of the ideas, there may be a condo type system, I've seen that in different locations where they condo out a couple floors, and what that allows the, the owner to do is have a steady revenue stream coming in year-round, but also allows for the continued operation as a hotel. Is that, is that the end game? No, we don't know. That's just concepts that people have come through with, ideas. The final idea is it's going to be brought in from the market, and what the market thinks is going to be best for downtown. Questions come up with financing, one of the biggest issues over the, and I know the Councilwoman Williams had a question in one of our meetings, and I'm sure council has the same question, is what is the existing debt on this facility? And we do have existing debt that's left over from the original project in 99. It was refinanced in 2013, and it's approximately $2.5 million, which is left on the bonds that we would be paying off over the next couple of years. To offset that, though, we would look at, obviously, the tax revenue or pilot revenue along with a 2% hotel tax that the city would receive. So there would be additional revenue stream of the 2% that would bring that in. There's also going to be the ability to borrow funds from EDA to help refurbish the property, and that offsets the costs too. So it, it's going to be a mix of different financing for someone coming in. We are looking for the private finance avenue first, if they, someone can do it. But if they're going to need some type of state assistance, we'll back them with EDA and that type of assistance or UEZ funds. We don't look at any impact on tax funds, we already have the impact of tax funds on the $2.5 million bond, so the focus would be making sure we defees that debt and we, we create revenues back into the city. If anybody has a question, it can pop in too, if they'd like. The investment for the property, for someone to really rehab the property, you know, potentially is in the $50 million range. So that's a type of investment we would see downtown, and what this does for the downtown, it does become the genesis of the rebirth of downtown. It brings people in on a regular basis, it brings them in 24/7. We've got a tourism market that we miss here. I mean, you're within, you know, a few hundred feet of, of, you know, the Battle of Trenton and where the Haitian soldiers were at, and we look at the summertime traffic through the city being substantially greater, and working with the tourism groups to have signage and so forth so people can come to the restaurant, but they can also by foot, take a tour of the downtown, take a tour of different areas. They're close enough to Washington's Crossing to take a day trip up to Washington's Crossing, take a look at that. So it really creates a spot where it would allow people to come in and would be a ripple effect for all the businesses downtown. The other thing we'd look at for potential use is overflow housing. If many colleges, sometimes when they overbook, there's a need for, for student housing. I've seen this at Stockton University, which has moved into partially the Lang City, but if, if there's a need, I mean, there, there are contracts that TCNJ, Ryder, and Princeton could utilize if they needed to. The other thing it allows for is state conferences, state training. The leading municipalities run conferences all the time, and we would kind of focus on getting them in to utilize our facilities to generate revenue too. So there's a lot of outreach we would do to get the state and local nonprofits and training back into the city to create that ongoing economic boost. I think I've covered most of this. I mean, obviously, the hotel acts as the anchor of the downtown, and we project on timing. If we, if we can get a developer by late spring, early, early summer, you know, with working through the redevelopment process, you know, potentially by this time next year, we could have construction starting into the building to refurbish it. So that's timelines that we're kind of pushing for. It's just going to take some time to get, get things put together and make sure it's beneficial to the city first in, in working with a developer. I'm excited about this project. I may, I may not look it, but I'm really, really excited about this project because I really do think utilizing the private markets and getting them back into the downtown i- is a substantial boost. It's going to boost the restaurants downtown, it's going to boost the little shops downtown, the bakery that's going to be down there. And I think that if anyone sees it, it's a renaissance to me. It's the beginning of the renaissance, bringing outside people in, enjoying the city, and understanding that Trenton is a viable downtown and viable business community that's going to work with and assist with anything that we can do to get the businesses back in town and get people back in town on a regular basis. And if we can get the state workers back in town five days a week, it would be a substantial boost too, which we push for on a regular basis with the mayor. I mean, adversity affects us after COVID. But it, it's a push, the mayor's pushing it. I know council was, people I spoke with on council was excited about it, and we are excited about it too. So, questions?
Madam President. Councilwoman Edwards.
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Liston, Director. I just have a couple of questions. First of all, I want to say thank you for doing this because this hotel has been a vein in our economy for upwards, if not more than a decade at this point. And we have seen the economic decline of our downtown as soon as the doors closed. We lost Maxine's, we lost a lot of businesses downtown. We most recently lost the nail shop and Starbucks and things. COVID did a number on us as well, so that wasn't helpful, but we were in decline before COVID. And is, is from what I'm hearing through the grapevine, this owner has not been responsible. And the city built this hotel, so I think that we have a responsibility to make sure that this does not just go like this, you know? I think that we are obligated, and I think that having a hotel would be beneficial to the city. So with that being said, I wanted to know, are we officially under contract right now with the owner?
We're not officially under contract, contracts have been drafted, they're being reviewed by both parties right now. I do communicate with our lawyer on a regular basis, and I actually do communicate with their attorney on a regular basis, who's a local attorney, very well versed in, in economic development. So it's moving along very quickly, and I hope to have at least a contracted sale by the end of the year. I mean, I'd love to have it by the meeting of the 19th, but if we can get it by the end of the year. As you know, we run into the Christmas problem when everybody starts shutting down, but we, I push it every day, I'm on the phone every day, trying to get this thing moving.
Okay, and next, given the previous attempts at purchasing the property from previous potential buyers, there has, there are rumors that there are an investigation and litigation happening with the hotel because of mishaps with some of the contracts, purchase agreements, contracts that had lapsed before. So I'm concerned about the liability of us purchasing this. If that is true, will that liability remain with the owner and won't be transferred to the city?
Wes, you want to, Wes, I've had this discussion numerous times already. Want to update us on that?
Yeah, we, our, our first step was to pull the, pull the title, basically, and see what encumbrances there were on there. We've also doing a search in the court system. I mean, it's, it's an expansive search. Really what we're concerned about now is any encumbrances that are on the title that we would have to clear up, and once we clear that up, we'll have a much better indication as to whether or not we're getting this free and clear of any liability. With respect to litigation, like for maybe something that happened there, that would be a separate search by, by way of looking at the court's docket, federal and Mercer County Court. But as of right now, I don't see that being an issue more so than encumbrances on the actual deed itself.
Okay, thank you.
We are doing a heavy, heavy due diligence on this property because we understand that, you know, you have, you may have secondary judgments that are sitting on this because it's been sitting for 12 years. You don't know with the prior owners, you know, what has been leaned against the property. So it, it's going to be one of the most intense searches that we're doing because we also have the parking authority issue with the rental parking spaces, you know, that are attached to the hotel. So we, we will, we will make sure that we are clear when we go into closing for this property. The other thing, just real quick, Maxine's, they are, the, the new owner is rebuilding that property. I met with him last week on some code issues and getting the UCC. He has invested substantial amounts of money into Maxine's right now too. So, I mean, hand in hand, I mean, right there, it brings the downtown back moving.
Awesome, thank you.
Interim Director Liston. So we're excited about the, the opportunity of this moving forward and hopeful that this will help to, to respark movement in downtown. What happens, just what happens, if we don't get a developer? So now we've bought the, we've bought the hotel.
No, we will not go to closing on the hotel until we have a developer who we designate. All right, and, and, and the best case scenario, what I'd like to do is what we call is a same-day flip. We walk in, we go to closing on, on the property, we go to another room, and we sell the property the same day. It's, it's a common practice in, in real estate, and we're not going to expose, we can expose, especially with the DCE oversight and our financial condition. We cannot take, take the hotel and, and manage it and rebuild it, and we, and the security would run us, you know, $20,000 a month just for security. It's, it's, we can't hold the property, we, we know that, we're not, you know.
Good. Councilwoman Williams?
Thank you very much, Council President. For some reason, my camera won't work, but we'll get that figured out. Thank you very much for the presentation, Director Liston. My only question is, because you've answered other questions, and I'm really happy you spoke about the financing because that is along, a lot of folks' minds. Can you talk about the status of the liquor license that was previously with the hotel? And is that still something that's available? Is it dormant? Or, you know, what the process would be to reestablish that when it was with the restaurant named Archives, I believe?
That's a very good question. I will, but what I will do is I'll research it out, but I don't think that liquor license is active anymore. It's not in pocket anywhere, correct? Now, okay, so what, what would happen is whoever the new purchaser would be, one of the things that they would look at is obviously the acquisition of a liquor license for the establishment. Also, there's, there were special licenses for 100-bed hotels that they, they allow, which is a special license. There's also seasonal licenses now. They've really opened up the liquor license potential. So one of the things that we will work with, with the redeveloper, is there finding a liquor license or how we work through the process, again, council being the ABC board, to make sure that they have an active license when they open, so they can service the public.
Okay, thank you very much, sir. This is an exciting project. Appreciate that.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Are there any other council, Council Vice President?
Good evening, Director, how are you?
Good.
Thank you for this. I mean, as you, you know, we are very excited at the possibility of this hotel coming to fruition and coming to life for the city of Trenton. I just want to assure that we have gone through everything with a fine-tooth comb in terms of what are we attracting in terms of developers to the city, attracted for them to stay, for this hotel to thrive. I know that we have pending entertainment district conversations that we are trying to, you know, establish and cement for the city because people coming to stay in the hotel, obviously, they're going to want amenities within the hotel, but also amenities outside of the hotel, and we want that to help establish for the businesses in downtown Trenton because they deserve that as well. We don't want a ghost town of a downtown Trenton the way that it is right now. So we want our hotel to win for the city, and we want our downtown to win as well. So what, with all the past failed dispositions that we have had with the hotel, what conversations are being had about bringing about the entertainment district for downtown Trenton and making this a viable option so that developers do want to invest in our city, and it, and it survived this time?
I mean, to me, that's one of the selling points of the hotel, is the entertainment district and what it can do with the War Memorial and bringing activities into the War Memorial. One of the things that's been discussed is working with the state to make sure that the owner of the hotel has the ability to either exercise options for the War Memorial so it can be utilized to bring people in. I mean, small concentration, you bring people in. I mean, we're also looking at the Trenton Thunder people, you know, when they're in town to utilize the hotel, when the Sure Arena, talk to the Sure Arena people, so when they're, they have activities, they're bringing in different groups that, you know, use the hotel. We're going to push everybody possible, you know, if you're operating or doing something in the city, Trenton or the region, you know, we want you downtown. But we also want to make sure when we, we talk to the developers and we vet the developers, and when I'm talking about vetting the developers, I mean, we're looking at their finances. We're looking at, you know, do you have the capacity? Do you have the ability to finance this? Do you have the ability? And what else have you done? It's also going to be, you know, have you built someplace else, you know, and how successful was that? And what did you do to make that place thrive? And this is all stuff you, you guys will have an opportunity to look at as, as the redevelopment entity when we come in and, and meet with the developers, which, which we'll do, that you'll be able to ask all them the questions you want, you'll be, will be, look at all the finances you want. It's got to be a transparent transaction for the public to make sure that this is going to be successful. We do not want to get involved in this and buy it and flip it or whatever, unless we have a very, very comfortable feeling that it's going to succeed. Because we, we're not going to bring, you know, something that is going to be just a detriment. It can't happen. We, and if it does happen, then, you know, we should, I shouldn't be here. A lot of people shouldn't be here. But, you know, we will really, really work through it, and Wes and I have regular meetings about making sure that whoever's coming in. And actually, I, I, when we vet developers, I actually send my people out, and I'll send them to say, okay, they have properties in Newark, they have properties in different parts of the state. And I send them out and say, go look at this property. I want to see what this property looks like. I want to make sure that they're maintaining the property. Let's see what the occupancy rate is. Same thing we're going to do with this. If I've got to, you know, send people to Pittsburgh or, or, I don't want to say Bermuda, no, but if, if, we, we are going to vet it very heavily. And I, I've been through this process before, and I look at everything across the board. We're going to look at layers of their financing and make sure where the financing, like with the liquor license, you, we're going to look at the finances, and we're going to look at, okay, where is this funding coming from and make sure that it works?
Thank you, Director. I mean, that sounds like a win-win for the city, which is what we need right now, and thank you for, I mean, we, we want people coming in with, as marketing visionaries that are going to utilize this property to the best, you know, of its ability to both look at our history, historical aspect of what Trenton already has to offer, but also to bring in new nuances, which is something that, it's a rebirth that we need. So you talked about the 2% hotel tax, which is great. We definitely want to see a return on our investment sooner rather than later because the city is in dire need of that. But you also discussed, it's my last question, borrowing from the EDA, should we need to?
We are not going to borrow from the EDA.
Okay.
Developer will borrow from the EDA. We, we have, and the mayor's been adamant about this, that it has to be a private transaction. We know what our weaknesses are, and we know that, you know, we cannot burden the, the city with, with a failed project.
Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other council persons with questions? All right, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. I just want to make, I'm sorry, one more change to the agenda.
Right ahead, Madam President.
In fairness to our constituents, right? So what we're going to do is we'll do the communications, petitions, and reports. We can go through the, the old business, but then I want to move the regular public comment part up before we go ahead and vote on the items that we have because we would be doing an injustice to the people if we went ahead and voted and didn't hear if anybody had anything that they wanted to say beforehand.
So we're moving the general public comment portion to between the old business and new business.
Yes.
Understood.
Also, for those in attendance tonight, there is a sign up, there are sign-up sheets in the back for general public comment and for the public comment as it pertains to the DOJ report. We are sticking tight to the agenda. If you are looking to speak on the DOJ report, as you speak to the recommendations, you are to sign that sheet in the back. There are 10 spaces, I believe, available, allotting 4.5 minutes per person. If 10 people were to sign up, coming to 45 minutes. So if you want to speak on the DOJ report, you will sign that public comment. You will not go into general public comment about that. This is going to be about items other than that. Mr. Garcia.
Certainly, Madam President. At this time, Madam President, if you want to ask for a motion to approve the minutes for October 1st and October 3rd.
Thank you. May I have a motion to approve the minutes from October 1st and October 3rd?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, Councilwoman Edwards.
Yes.
Vice President Figueroa Kettinburg.
Yes.
Councilwoman Frisbee.
Yes.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Yes.
Councilman, excuse me, Councilwoman Williams? Councilwoman Williams? Council President Feliciano?
Yes.
I'll come right back to Councilwoman Williams. She has her hand up.
She's, she's saying that she needs to be unmuted, but, yes.
We can only ask.
I'm unmuted, sorry. I had muted myself earlier than I regenerated.
Okay.
Got it. So that's a yes?
Yes, sir.
Thank you very much. Motion carried. Moving on to communications, petitions, and reports, Madam President, if you want to ask for a motion to approve.
Yes, may I have a motion to approve all communications, petitions, and reports?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Roll call, Councilwoman Edwards.
Yes.
Vice President Figueroa Kettinburg.
Yes.
Councilwoman Frisbee.
Yes.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Yes.
Councilwoman Williams?
Yes.
Council President Feliciano?
Yes.
Motion carried. And Madam President, as I understand, oh, wait, we have old business. So we will move to ordinances for second reading and public hearing. Ordinance 24-072, ordinance authorizing the sale of city-owned property, city-owned property commonly known as 101 Holman Avenue and identified on the city tax map Block 33704 Lot 1 pursuant to NJSA 40A:12-13B5 to Major 682 Properties LLC for the sale price of $2,500. Are there any members of the public that wish to speak to this ordinance at this time? Seeing none, Madam President, if you want to ask for a motion to approve.
May I have a motion to approve?
So moved. Second.
Roll call, Councilwoman Edwards.
Yes.
Vice President Figueroa Kettinburg.
Yes.
Councilwoman Frisbee.
Yes.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Yes.
Councilwoman Williams?
Yes.
Council President Feliciano?
Yes.
Motion carried. Ordinance 24-074, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Trenton requiring the council to convene in a retreat within 60 days after the reorganization following each Trenton municipal election. Are there any members of the public that wish to speak to this ordinance at this time? Ms. Cordelia Staden, thank you.
Cordelia Staden, 310 Gardner Avenue. Good evening, Council.
Cordelia Staden, 310 Gardner Avenue. Good evening, Council President and distinguished members of council. I stand in favor of this ordinance. I think it will be of great benefit to the governing body to have a retreat after every reorganization. It's always good to, you know, get together and go over collective goals and things of that nature. So I'm glad to see it. We didn't have it during my time, but I'm glad to see it's happening now. Thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any other members of the public that wish to speak to this ordinance at this time? Seeing none, Madam President, if you want to ask for a motion to approve?
May I have a motion to approve?
So moved. Second.
Roll call, Councilwoman Edwards?
Yes.
Vice President Figaro Kettnerberg?
Yes.
Councilwoman Frisbee?
Yes.
Councilwoman Gonzalez?
Yes.
Councilwoman Williams?
Yes.
Council President Feliciano?
Yes.
Motion carried. Ordinance 24-75, an ordinance amending and supplementing Trenton City Code, Chapter A, 316, Rule 2A, governing regular meeting of meetings of the Trenton City Council. Are there any members of the public that wish to speak to this ordinance at this time? Ms. Cordelia Staden?
I'm the same person. I haven't moved. Cordelia Staden, 310 Gardner Avenue, for the record. I am in strong opposition to ordinance 24075, and I take exception to the proposed changes to the city code that pertains to city council meetings. Over the past 10 years, this chapter, which governs city council operations, has been repeatedly altered by previous governing bodies to serve the interests of individuals rather than the community as a whole. We've seen excessive power granted to the council president, limitations on public speaking time, and now a new reorganization structure, just to name of the few changes. As a former councilperson, I sat in the same seat you now occupy, and I can't fathom how the city's business can be adequately conducted with only two meetings per month. There's an undeniable value in being able to review meeting materials as a group, ask questions, seek clarification, and gather additional information during the Tuesday conference session, which allows for swift action on Thursday with the consent agenda presentations and recognitions. It is difficult to believe that you don't see the benefit in maintaining both the Tuesday and Thursday meetings. Yes, I understand that two nightly meetings every two weeks can be time-consuming, but it is part of the responsibilities you took on when you were elected. While it is true that the chambers may not always be full of residents, the presence of an audience should not be the determining factor in the effectiveness of your work. Many people are unable to attend meetings due to work schedules, family obligations, health conditions, or transportation issues. That is why I was glad to see the evolution of the hybrid meetings during COVID, which now have become regular features of city council meetings. The ability to participate virtually is a significant improvement, and it speaks to the importance of transparency and accessibility in government. I respectfully ask that you reconsider your position on this ordinance and give the people you serve the time and attention we deserve. Effective governance requires openness, accessibility, and the commitment to ensure that all voices, all voices of the residents are heard and considered more than twice a month. Thank you.
Are there any other members of the public that wish to speak to this ordinance at this time? Go right ahead, come right up, ma'am. Please state your name and address for the record.
Hi, my name is Denise Turner. I ran for county commissioner for Mercer County in Trenton, New Jersey. I'm just having a lot of concerns right now as far as what's going on in our city. To my knowledge right now, I have a building on Center Street, and I've been trying to open it up ever since June. I have not been able to open it because there's no one here in the city hall to put the paperwork through.
Ms. Turner, forgive me, could you just state your address for the record a second?
Yes, 19 Bruce Park Drive, Trenton, New Jersey. I have a building on Center Street, 653 Center Street. I've spoken to many people here in City Hall. They told me it would take two to three months. So right now, I'm just spending money on a building that I cannot open up. I've been running the City of Trenton for 17 years. We have two other buildings that we run in Trenton.
Ma'am, I don't mean to interrupt you, but this is only to be pertaining to this particular ordinance. Is there something pertaining to this ordinance at this time that you wish to speak?
Well, I think, I, I thought that this was a part of the ordinance for me trying to get my building in and taken care of, which should be an ordinance for 653 on Center Street.
Mr. Garcia, I would maybe recommend that you make that comment during regular public comment versus as it relates to this ordinance? Other further to solicitor? When public comment comes, you can come up and speak to this, the statements right now with respect to this ordinance for the meetings, ma'am.
No problem. Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Okay, thank you. Are there any members of the public that wish to speak to this ordinance at this time? Seeing none, Madam President, if you want to ask for a motion to approve?
May I have a motion to approve?
So moved. Second.
Roll call, Councilwoman Edwards?
No.
Vice President Figaro Kettnerberg?
Yes.
Councilwoman Frisbee?
Yes.
Councilwoman Gonzalez?
Yes.
Councilwoman Williams?
No.
Council President Feliciano?
Yes.
Motion carried. Moving on to ordinance 24-76, an ordinance amending and supplementing Trenton City Code, Section 309-69, unauthorized reconnection of services. Are there any members of the public that wish to speak to this ordinance at this time? Seeing none, Madam President, if you want to ask for a motion to approve?
May I have a motion to approve?
So moved. Second.
Roll call, Councilwoman Edwards?
Yes.
Vice President Figaro Kettnerberg? Councilwoman Frisbee?
Yes.
Councilwoman Gonzalez?
Yes.
Councilwoman Williams?
Yes.
Council President Feliciano?
Yes.
Motion carried. And, Madam President, as I understand it, at this time, you wish to move to?
Public comment.
Public comment.
Mm-hmm.
This is general public comment, correct?
Yes.
Okay, I'll take the public comment clipboard. Thank you. And, Madam President, at this time, we have 12, 17 individuals listed for public comment. Public comment will be?
Three minutes?
Three minutes in length.
And this is pertain, and this is general public comment only? This does not pertain to the DOJ report. So this is general public comment only. Please, ladies and gentlemen, not the DOJ report.
Madam President, just to be clean and clear here, could you have asked for a motion to reduce public comment from the original five minutes to the three?
Yes, may I have a motion to approve reducing public comment from five minutes to three due to 17 speakers this evening?
So moved. Second.
Roll call, Councilwoman Edwards?
Yes.
Vice President Figaro Kettnerberg?
Yes.
Councilwoman Frisbee?
Yes.
Councilwoman Gonzalez?
Yes.
Councilwoman Williams?
Yes.
Council President Feliciano?
Yes.
Motion carry. Public comment will be three minutes in length for each individual. You may address any item that you wish at this time. Please understand the council is not obligated to respond. First individual we have listed for public comment is Tammy Duffy.
Hello, Tammy Duffy, 109 Sweetbrier Avenue, Trenton, New Jersey. 220,000 people were affected. What level of unscrupulous behavior is the trigger for the Trenton leadership to step in and react and hold those accountable, accountable? The recent revelations about Trenton Water Works failing to meet critical water monitoring obligations for over a year is deeply concerning and completely unacceptable. The health and safety of our residents must never be compromised, and this latest failure underscores the persistent inability of TWW to uphold its responsibilities. The cultures of one's organization is defined by the worst behavior you will tolerate. These bad cultures have an enormous negative effect on businesses, towns, and organizations when bad behaviors are tolerated. It sets the tone for the entire organization. Other employers figure out behavioral standards are subjective, and they determine there's no point in reporting the behavior if nothing will be done to address it. In addition, the employees are too afraid to speak up in fear of losing their jobs, pensions, medical insurance, et cetera. Employees model the behavior they see in their leaders, so the upper management must hold themselves accountable to the same standards they expect to see in their teams. But what happens when there is no expectation, when there is no accountability, when everyone remains silent? Well, until a DOJ report based on an 18-month investigation is released. Organizations struggling with theft of time issues, DOJ investigations, TWW malfeasance, misuse of financial revenue, animal shelter issues, at times cannot figure out what is wrong with their culture. It turns out, leadership is a big part of the problem. Management must model behavior, which includes not tolerating bad behavior. This will help show what will and will not be tolerated. The DOJ report clearly demonstrates bad behavior. I know they're going to talk about that later, so I'm going to move on from that. But if the city of Trenton does not rise to the level of their goals, they will forever remain at the level of their broken system, systems. I want all of you to have rage in what's going on in Trenton. I want you to have passion to say enough is enough. It's time for the leadership to step up, step up and stop the hemorrhaging, have accountability for those not performing in their roles. It's time to put the bar on the holder and raise it up. This lack of leadership affects 220,000 people daily that get water supply from TWW. You need to really care about this. Wake up every morning and make this your mission to fix it. If you do not, then you should may-
Three minutes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next person I have is Brittany Jones.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Brittany Jones, and I reside at 832 East Bay Street, where I live with my parents and my four children. That is not by choice, but it's because I've been on the THA housing waiting list since 2012. But we're not here for that. Recently, I can't even read this because it's too much and I got three minutes. So over the last, I would say since summer, the ending months, there have been raccoons living in my ceiling. I have, again, four kids, and we're all, I'm getting emotional. All of us are in one room. My kids have a bunk bed that they refuse to sleep on the top bunk because they hear it running. I can't sleep with all of them in my bed with me, even though I too am scared. I live in fight or flight constantly, so I don't sleep because if it falls through my ceiling, I have to put me in between them and get them to safety and worry about me last. My youngest just turned two. I cannot have myself being like so many other parents that are burying their children so young. I refuse to do it. The building next to my house, 830 East Bay Street, has been abandoned for almost as long as I can remember, at least the last 10 years, and my oldest daughter is 10. So I remember bringing her home very vividly. We have complained about the yard because the grass overgrows in the back, which brings the wildlife in. People have squatted in that building once before. They didn't care to hide it. It was raided, and they pulled those people out with dogs and drugs. It was also complained about, and then there was nothing that happened. There have been birds that have also lived in that same space in my roof from a building that is not where I'm living. We had someone come and check our roof. There's nothing wrong with our roof. So how are they getting in? Well, the roofer says that the building, 830 East Bay Street, barely has a roof that is still stable. I saw the inside when you guys sent people out to set the traps to catch said rodent, and there are barely any walls inside of that building because copper and everything else had been ripped out of that place. And I saw some man drag out from the basement window a furnace or a water heater, whatever that was, from this exact building. The rest of that doesn't matter. My concern is the safety of my children. Something needs to be done about this because if I end up hurt, or if any of them end up hurt, nobody here is going to like the outcome of that, and everybody will, for real, know me and know my name. Thank you.
Thank you.
Camille Jones? Kathy Jones? All right.
A little disappointed that it's only three minutes, but my name is Kathy Jones. I reside at 832 East Bay Street. I want to say that my property has been negatively damaged by 830 East Bay Street. We have sound recordings of the raccoons, the birds. We have two relevant videos. So we have things that you can hear if you like. Let's see. The property has been abandoned for about two decades, and we've been complaining about it ever since. For years, there have been squatters living. One day, it was raided. Apparently, it was a drug house that the police were watching, and that was a danger to us because we had no idea that this kind of activity was going on in a, in a building that was directly attached to our house. There have been raccoon problems for years, and the structure is compromised and needs to come down. Every year, we call the city, and they send someone to put out traps. But is that fixing the problem? No. It's like putting a Band-Aid on someone who's been stabbed in the carotid artery. The man from the city that, that the city hired to set the traps said he stood across the street and watched the raccoons go in and out of the roof of the house. Now, my house has been invaded with raccoons, cats, and pigeons. On the third floor, the third floor of my house, I feel like the, the raccoons have made their way into the third floor, and now they have gone into the second floor of the house. We can't even take a shower without wondering if this is the day that they will break through the ceiling. As a matter of fact, I almost broke my toe trying to run out of the shower because they started making so much noise, jumping up and down and growling. I thought that they were having, I thought that they were going to break through the ceiling. I took a picture of my swollen bloody toe the next day, so if anybody wants to see it, I have it. My grandkids sleep on the third floor, and I'm afraid every night that these critters will break through and maul them, all of them. And we were not able to enjoy our property inside or out because of 832 East Bay Street. I continually call and email every year because of overgrown grass in the back. It attracts all kinds of rodents, nesting cats, raccoons, groundhogs, opossums, just to name a few animals that I have seen. The city finally came out and cleaned the rear and replaced a section of fencing from a tree that had fallen from the 830 East Bay Street into my yard. There are two other trees that need to be cut down, but of course, that was never addressed. It is not fair for us to have to live like this. My daughter is traumatized. She sleeps on a sofa almost every night because of the pounding and scratching going on in the ceiling. Is that fair? Would it be, would you accept this if it was in your home? If you would, let's trade spaces. I have asked, pleaded, and begged for the property to be torn down, but it has fallen on deaf ears. So here's what I'm prepared to do. I will retain representation and contact all media outlets and make them aware of the issue. I believe that this is, if this was happening to a resident in Ewing Hamilton, the house would have been torn down. But-
Wasn't it?
Can I finish, please?
I'm sorry, ma'am, that is your three minutes. We would not be fair to everyone if we cut that off. I do apologize.
This is not right because I was told by the clerk that it was going to be five minutes, and now all of a sudden, it's changed. I have about a paragraph left to read. I'm asking, please, can I continue?
Ma'am, if, so we have people that are here tonight that can listen. Clearly, 830 East Bay Street is a problem. So I'm asking our business administrator and the director of public works if you'll talk to Ms. Jones about what the issue is so that we have her addressed here tonight and we're still fair to the other people to let them speak. So if you can go and speak with her now, this is the business administrator and the director of public works who can listen to what it is and hopefully get something done with 830 East Bay Street.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you, Madam President.
The BA and the public works director.
Our next, uh, next up for public comment is Charles Lewis. Our next, uh, next up for public comment is Charles Lewis.
How you doing? My name is Charles Lewis, and I live at one ninety-eight Pennington Avenue, Trenton, New Jersey. Well, here we go again. I thought I wouldn't be standing before you again, but here I go again. I just want to be very clear, because I am very resolute about these two issues that need clarity and need to be resolved. As we know, one ninety-six Pennington Avenue, which I've been trying to cure from the city, I don't understand why they're dragging their feet when I gave them an offer of $4,000 for the property. Also, I want to present this also because this is the fault judgment against the city. Just like Mr. Listen from the Housing and Economic Development was talking, he's so excited about the hotel, but we need to be more excited about the people that got the issues in the city. We got to solve those issues first before we go at a higher level. Like I said, there is the judgment against the city, which I was told had to be presented between two housing, I mean, to, to, uh, to you guys so that it can be paid. I'm willing to waive that judgment because it's a little more than what I offered for the lot at one ninety-six Pennington Avenue. I'm willing to waive that. Give me the lot, and let's move on, get resolved, so we can get this settled. This has been drawn out and longed out, and it's getting ridiculous. I mean, how far do I have to go to obtain what I deserve? And, and, I mean, how long is it going to take? I'm keeping getting in runaround with everybody about the same situation. I've been to Housing Economic Development Office three times this month, in the last month and the beginning of this month. I mean, when am I going to get resolved? About one ninety-six Pennington Avenue? You got the offer, you got whatever, whatever you need, I can, I can, I can offer it. I'm not waiting for the, for the judgment to go through. I got the money and the finances to obtain that lot so I can move forward. I'm tired of fighting with the church, because just like I said before, they just there on Sunday. I live there. So we need, we need to do something about the little issues that we have in the city before we can get this hotel, like the same Mr. Listener was talking about, you know, this, he's excited, well, make me excited too, about these little projects. I know I'm running close, and that's, that's pretty much what I got to say. And I shouldn't have to keep coming down here. How, how long has it been? It's been five years. Five years dealing with this situation, with the demolition of the house and all of this at one ninety-six Pennington Avenue. You know, I, I mean, what are we going to do here? And that's all I got to say.
Forgive me if I tear this name apart. Srikanth Padepalli? How did it? Thank you.
Thing is, we own the businesses on East Center Street, four twenty-two Center Street. Every day, morning, evening, afternoon, people come and use drugs in there.
I'm sorry, sir. Did you say your name?
My name is Srikanth Padepalli. Srikanth.
Okay. And what's the address, sir?
Four twenty-two Center Street. We have a laundry mat there, and every day, morning, evening, afternoon, the people come and use drugs. I send you pictures this, this afternoon about the people taking drugs there, and then I call the police. Police comes, and they don't do anything. It's like criminal trespassing every day. And one thing, and then there are panhandlers everywhere in Trenton now. They, they collect money in the afternoon, morning, and they come and do drugs all over Trenton in the evenings, after night. There are so many panhandlers everywhere. You go to William Trent Place, right here, you see them. Everywhere. It's like unbelievable how many people are asking for money. People stop their cars and give them money, and they, they buy drugs every day. Those are the two issues, like, we need to do something with the drugs. They're selling drugs like every day on Center Street, too much. I'll send you the pictures again if you guys didn't get it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ivy Avery, one Prospect Street. I'm just here this evening to bring attention to the fact that some of our intersections where children cross and where are their crossing guards are hazardous and dangerous. This city has really become a traffic hazard. I mean, people drive crazy. Personally, where I live, there's an intersection where five streets come together. Prospect, Hanover, West State, and Spring. There's one crossing guard there, and it is considered a red zone. There could be two, but there are not enough, I understand. So I've asked for signs. You know, most crossing places with where the schools are have the school crossing signs in the street. So I did ask for that. I, I think I've been talking to the wrong people. I talked to the person in charge of the crossing guards that was in his area. I went to the street division. I didn't get any satisfaction there. I sent an email, but I think it got lost in the spam or trash, but it was found. I resent. So I want to thank Crystal, the president of council, for forwarding it to the proper person. I understand that they went out, looked at the intersection, and they're supposed to have the signs that are going to be placed there. It really is dangerous. After what happened on Stuyvesant Avenue with the crossing guard that was hit, I think that it's imperative that we give our crossing guards in the city, and many of them are retired people who are older, the things that they need to be safe, not only for themselves but for the children. And that's basically what I wanted to say again. Thank you, Crystal, for forwarding that. I'm going to keep my eye on that corner. But I'm speaking not only for my intersection now, by my house, but any other intersection, because there used to be a crossing guard on Rutherford and Prospect. There's no longer a crossing guard there. And I know that sometimes they don't have the people, but we have to be mindful of where our children are crossing and make sure that they're safe. And that's basically, oh, yeah. I also made signs, and I put them in the street myself, not in the street, but I had them on the, on the grassy areas. Then it rained, and it messed them up. So I'm going to be looking for those signs. I'll be back, and I'll let you know if they're there. But it's really important that we find the resources to get those signs. Thank you.
Cordelia Staten?
Good evening. This isn't bad at all. I just wanted to first congratulate Councilwoman Gonzalez on Resolution twenty-four forty-one, on your appointment to the Electoral College for the 2024 presidential election. That's big stuff. And the other thing I wanted was to congratulate the city for appointing a permanent CEO and CFO in Lynn L. Is that correct? I know she's served the city well, and so hopefully she'll continue to be an asset to this administration.
My name is Monroe Laramore. I live at two sixty North Willow Street. And as I say on the podcast, this is the greatest city in the world, as far as I'm concerned. There's a lot of problems here, and you need to meet with people, find out what's the delay, why the man can't get the property. Obviously, he's saving his money. Get in touch with him, find out what's going on. And as far as the people using drugs, find out why they're using drugs. I've said in the past, people use drugs to bear with the world, they, they sell drugs to survive the world. Find out what people's needs are and take care of it. When it comes to a hotel, yes, we need entertainment. So you can have undercover people that are inside the building like a running terminal. So if there's trouble, the security can keep tabs on it and take care of it. As far as this red light business and people running red lights, you need to, my, my grandniece just was ran over by a car, so what you need to do is make sure that you take down people's license number who are running red lights. I know it's legal in Pennsylvania, it may not be legal here, but we need to put a stop to things, and we can check people at these red lights if they know that they're going to get a letter in the mail for a hundred dollars or whatever the case might be.
Good evening. My name is Jessica Nitty, five thirty-five East Franklin Street. I'm here to speak about Campfire New Jersey. We have had the phenomenal opportunity to partner with the Trenton Elementary Schools for the past fifteen years. We have, we do programs, our programs run for eight weeks. They're comprehensive programs, which are age and developmentally appropriate. They address the mental, the mental health through social, emotional learning, utilizing the trauma-informed lens and restorative practices. We see, on average, about twenty-four hundred students a year. We are in all thirteen elementary schools currently in the first grades. We are also in all of the six, the intermediate, the six schools in all of the fourth grade classes. What we do at Campfire is go into these classrooms, not only to support our youth, but to support our, our teachers, the administration. We look at ways to weave a web to help the school community step forward. We know that our children, our families are facing trauma, as we hear different levels of it tonight. We look at ways to support them in the traumas that they are experiencing, how to support families, communities, connection. I've been at Campfire for many years because I've seen what it does. I've seen these kids. I've seen their faces when we see them, when our instructors are in these classrooms, working with them, listening to them. We see them, we hear them. We really look at inclusivity because we know the importance of including all of our youth. We have bilingual instructors that do our program in English and Spanish, so the children are, feel all included. Campfire is an organization that truly cares about the communities we service. When we are in Trenton Elementary Schools, we look at the best ways to support the school systems that we're in. And every school, every thirteen elementary schools, all of them, they're different, the needs that they have. So we look at how we can train our instructors through trauma, through restorative, through mental health, that they can stand up there, not only supporting the children, but supporting those teachers as well. Thank you for giving me this moment to speak of Campfire New Jersey. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Good evening. I'm glad to be here in front of you again. Right to the issue that I'm hearing tonight, it goes back to the same thing I've been saying in the last two, maybe two or three times I've been here, that this is something that has been directed since nineteen fifty-six at, to the black community of North America, particularly the African-American community. And the issue started then, when the protests started and the civil rights movement and the black liberation movement, that the Puerto Ricans got involved. What was one a black issue, it then became a black-brown issue. And I say now, black-brown, ethnic issue, because it's affecting anyone who's, who now know, understand what's going on, the drug war. It's actually designed to destroy the black community that is to raise up or a community within the black, African, African-American community in search of the so-called, well, not the so-called, the black Messiah, the black Jesus. Supposed to appear and save the planet from evil. Okay, so therefore, that goes to law enforcement, and that's a different issue. So again, that is something that I noticed in politics, running for the presidency, Trump and his crew won, but the Democrats were neglecting the lower class and the underclass. Now, had they considered the lower, middle class, the lower class, and then the underclass, which we in Trenton are treated like, we don't, we're not even considered middle class, low, lower-middle class. We're considered lower-class, underclass. In other words, I learned recently that once you get to the low, the underclass, you're not even considered as worthy of being addressed with whatever issues you may have politically or otherwise. And I noticed that, that was, has been happening in Trenton for maybe twenty-five, thirty years. At one time, Trenton was like a little New York. I was one time offered to go to Puerto Rico. I said, for what? Why should I leave Trenton? And that was true. So what I went from here to New York, to Philly, to Camden, because this was the spot. This is not the spot any longer. Now, bringing attraction to people from the outside to the city, of course, the gangbanging and all that, that's part of life, that's politics, but that's bad policies from Washington, DC. It started nineteen fifty-six with Jagger Hoover, continued with Nixon, followed by Ronald Reagan, and still going today, again, the war of, not the war, the drug war is actually designed to destroy the black community. And those who sympathize with the black community, I say again, specifically the African-American community. So now, back to traffic. That traffic down there in Wall Street and Broad Street going into South Trenton, that need to be opened up by the, what is it, state, state buildings. Open that up, bring it all the way from South Trenton all the way to North Trenton, going...
I believe that is your time.
All right, thank you.
Hello. My name is Hope Madonna Williamson, and I reside on five Beechwood Avenue. The reason why I'm here today is because I received a call, similar to other parents, a robocall stating that there is a lockdown at Joseph P. Stokes Elementary. Unlike the previous robocalls, this one stated that there was a shooting across the street from the school. The school is located at nine-ten Parkside Avenue. It has entrances on both Holman and Maple Avenue. The shooting happened on Maple Avenue. The reason why I'm addressing this is because I have, in the past, when Trenton decided to redistrict, I requested that each school have crossing guards. This school has been open for approximately three years, and there has been no crossing guard. I have contacted the Trenton Police Department. I've requested an officer to sit out there because people speed. There are no speeding cameras out there either. There are no speed bumps on Holman Avenue, and it's ridiculous that you would have to request a petition in order to get a speed bump in a school zone. That shouldn't even be a thing. Not only that, I've requested our West Ward liaison to be out there to assist with traffic and crossing the children who range from the ages of five to eight years old. That has not occurred either. These are the issues that we are presently having, and I hope that Trenton will instead take a proactive approach instead of a reactive approach. Another thing is the dumping on eleven-thirty Stuyvesant Avenue in front of Claridge Apartments. They dump sofas along with mattresses. These mattresses impede pedestrian traffic. Not only that, but children have to walk past these... Not only that, but children have to walk past these pieces of garbage. It seems like each time that there's something that needs to be done in Trenton, you have to hold an official's hand to get it done, whether you're calling the Trenton Department of Sanitation, whether you're calling to request information about something. I'm requesting that these items be moved and that the fact that children attend these schools, they also be taken into account. Not only that, but Councilwoman Teska Frisbee, you work not too far from, what is it, Stokes? And yet it doesn't seem like you're doing much for that area. I hope that you will also take this in account and get a crossing guard out there or assign a police officer. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yanise Turner? Denise, okay, thank you.
You have my address and everything from before, right? Or do you need it again? Yes, 19 Bruce Park Drive, PO Box 56. That's better. All right. So you have everything or you want me?
Uh, yeah, just want to state your name and address for the record.
Denise Turner, PO Box 56, Trenton, New Jersey, resided at 19 Bruce Park Drive.
Thank you.
I'm here for a couple of reasons, far as my business is concerned. I've been coming to City Hall since June. I put in application paperwork for planning for me to open up a daycare. I've been doing daycare for 20 some years. So I'm, they told me within two to three months. So I, I gave it an extra month, four months, still nothing. They lost the paperwork, couldn't find this, they don't have anybody there to get the paperwork done. It's just ridiculous. I'm just appalled at this whole city of Trenton right now. I grew up in Monroe Township, moved to Trenton from Jamesburg in Monroe Township. I've been here for about 17, 18 years. And I've just seen a lot of stuff going on in the city of Trenton that needs to be addressed, that is not being addressed. Right now I feel like I'm being discriminated upon because I know that there's people who haven't had their business paperwork in before me, who has gotten their paperwork. I just don't know what's, what's going on because my next move is calling the governor, calling the newspaper, calling TV, going on Twitter, Facebook and everything else because something needs to be done. I put an application in here, I say, last year when I was running for county commissioner. And I did this just to see how things were going to go. I had paperwork from this much that they asked me to bring in. Not only did I run for county commissioner, I'm also an officer in forensic and I run my own business. And between my two and three kids, we have two, three businesses in the city of Trenton. And this has been far the worst. I'm, I've been waiting for almost seven, eight months to get some paperwork done. I'm paying for a building and I have no residuals coming back. I was making over $4,000 every two weeks to nothing right now. I'm exhausting all my paper, all my funds into this building, but no one could tell me nothing. I don't spoke to so many people in here, I don't even want to elaborate any names right now. And nothing has been done. I'm just appalled. And like, it's just too much going on in the city that we're not even addressing. Where's the funds going? Where's the money going? Because I would love to know. When I applied for the, the first time home buyers paperwork, they wanted this, they wanted that. They even asked me for credit card statement. They asked me for vehicle insurance and asked me for ludicrous things. Me and my accountant was just appalled. And so by the time I got done, they're going to tell me that I made too much money. First of all, you would have had that criteria on that first paper to tell me, I would have known, I know how much money I make a year. So I wouldn't have never applied if that was the case.
That is, yes, that is your time, but thank you.
Yeah.
Joe Marchika, did I get it correct?
Hi, everybody. My name is Joe Marchika. I organize with the Greater Trenton Democratic Socialists of America. It's the local Trenton area branch of the largest left-wing political organization in the country. And I'm here today to speak on behalf of our membership in and around Trenton. I'm here to speak in support of the working class people, black, white, brown, otherwise in Trenton.
Just need to name your address for the records.
Sure. Henshaw Field Road.
Thank you.
Yeah. And I want to speak a little bit about the Department of Justice report that came out about Trenton Police.
Thank you, sir. Right now, this is just for general public comment only. We have a separate public comment section and I had announced everyone would sign the paper to talk about that.
There was no paper available out here to sign when I went to sign it, so I.
All the spaces say we're not allowing comment about that at this time. We're doing that separately.
That's fine, just tell me where to put my name down and I'll wait.
Right here, sir.
Is there space left, Mr. Garcia?
Yes, there is.
Thank you, you can sign there.
Go ahead.
Thank you.
Madam President, those are all the individuals that have public comment at this time. The DOJ sheet is, will leave out there, we still have a couple of spaces. And that was also, that was collected along with the general public comment. So we'll go ahead and put that back up. Thank you, sir. If you would, please just put that back to the public if that would be okay. Moving on with the agenda, Madam President. On your call.
After this gentleman signs, is that the last space for that? Let us clear this up. Jorge, could you please put the sheet back at the table so if anyone else wants to speak to the DOJ report, they have the opportunity to sign the paper so we can continue. Thank you.
It's fine. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Garcia?
Certainly, Madam President. Moving on to new business at this time, we have resolutions. And Madam President, is, are there any items that you or the council wish to extract for other questions or from a potential consent agenda?
Right. At this time, council, seeing council members have any questions about any resolutions that we need to ask at this moment before we move to consent agenda? If so, please let us know.
Council President?
Yes.
So I have a couple of resolutions. First one is 24-479.
Okay.
24-481.
Okay.
I'm sorry, actually, no, we went through that one already, so I'm okay with 41. So starting again, 24-479. 24-482.
Thank you.
24-509. And 24-510.
Thank you. Any other council people have any questions about any resolutions?
Council President?
Yes, Councilwoman.
I have one for, I have it in my docket, but not on the actual listing, but the 24-077?
24?
Well, this is an ordinance though.
Oh. All right, one second.
I don't think it's on this one, but it's.
All right, so that's a, so we'll get to that. Thank you. Anything on the resolution? Thank you. Any other council members about resolutions? Any questions?
Madam President?
Yes, Councilwoman.
The question about 24-508?
Hold on. 24. 508, yes. That's it?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Any other council member? Councilwoman Williams, did you have a question on something?
Yes, ma'am, thank you. 24-477, 24-480. And then 24-520.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
All right. Before we start this, because it's going to move at a, you know, at its own pace, I just want to take a moment to recognize Councilwoman at Large Jasmine Nellie Gonzalez for her appointment to the Electoral College for the 2024 presidential election. We're recognizing her tonight with Resolution 24-481. And we also have special recognition that we'll present to her at a later time. It's a historical moment for Councilwoman Gonzalez, it's a historical moment for Trenton. So we just want to clap it up for her and say congratulations. We are proud of you and thank you. All right. Let's get down to business. 24-477. So Councilwoman Williams, BA Richardson is going to be answering the questions for the HED. So 24-477, whenever you're ready, Councilwoman.
Okay, thank you very much, ma'am, I appreciate that. So my question had to do with, and thank you, BA Richardson. I know we've been waiting for this for a long time, particularly some of these properties going on 18 months, two years almost, in my case with one property. So I was wondering, do you have an estimate or a guestimate you can share with the public and us on when some of these demolitions may be able to occur? If it's approved?
Good evening, Maria Richardson, Business Administrator. Well, once this resolution is adopted, we need to issue a contract, have the contractor sign, the mayor sign, administration sign. After that, we are able to start the demolition process. I anticipate that that will be most likely at the end of middle, mid, end of January. Once the process begins, it takes several weeks. But for now, we need to do some logistics process, which is basically make sure that all utilities are disconnected and make those sites safe for demolition. So those are active projects as of this time, but demolition itself will begin most likely at the end of January.
Okay, and then because they're considered hazardous, do we still have any wait period with DCA for approval?
Not in this case. This is paid with ARP money. So no, we, we do not have to wait once the project, the, the contract is in place.
Okay, excellent, thank you. And then 24-480?
One second, Councilwoman, can we put that on consent? Are you fine with that?
Yes, please, yes, ma'am, I'm sorry.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
And one second, Councilwoman, we're going in order here, 24-479. Councilwoman Frisbee had questions?
Thank you, Council President.
Thank you.
So I was just looking on the 12th page, I just want to go back to that. It talks about where they're going to be reaching out and getting, speaking with the brokers. I wanted to make sure with this that they're not just speaking with the brokers, but they also will be consulting with the residents as well and making sure that we're getting feedback from the residents.
This, this resolution pertains to UEC areas and it's for business attraction. Yes, as part of the UEC projects, we need to involve some of the residents that are exactly next to the businesses and those things, but it would be, if that is something that you are requiring, most likely we could accommodate some of it. But for UEC purposes, we need to contact the business owners in that area.
Okay, I just know that the community is always talking about they want to make sure they're involved and I'm sure TWA, they'll also be involved. I'm, I'm assuming that they'll be involved with this as well, but it's always if there are residents that are nearby, that we can get any feedback from them if necessary.
Okay, I will make sure that the UEC Coordinator and the Director of Housing and Economic Development get your consent.
Thank you, ma'am. My pleasure.
It's okay for consent?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. 24-480, Councilwoman Williams?
Thank you, Council President. This may be almost moot at this point, but is this resolution, this would be the $1 million that we, my question regarding 477, this is the appropriation to pay for 477?
That is correct. We will utilize this 1 million plus some capital funding to fund those demolitions.
Okay, thank you very much. Can't wait to get these properties demolished.
Yes, they have been.
My concerns would be very happy.
Yes, thank you so much.
Consent agenda, Councilwoman?
Yes, please.
Thank you. 24-482, Councilwoman Frisbee?
BA Director, BA Richardson, you might as well just park right there. Thank you so much. I just, I'm in agreement with this resolution. I just would, for the sake of the public, would love to have you expound upon it so they are aware as also what this is detailing.
It's Resolution 482, correct?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes. This is, this resolution will allow the, our purchasing department, the city itself, to enter into a contract with this edge market cooperative. It's part of, it's one of the provisions of the New Jersey procurement regulations. Municipalities are able to use alternative methods of procurement, like using cooperative or state contracts. That basically allows the city to be part of a conglomerate of buyers, right? And purchase at lower prices without having to go through the process of RFPs or BIDs. So that's basically it. This is free for the city, it's just allows us to, to purchase as part of a group of buyers.
Thank you. I just wanted to make sure that the public understood that as well, that this is not at a cost to the city, but it is good for the city. Thank you. Thanks. It's gone consent agenda.
Thank you. All right. And before we continue, I just want to let the public know, since we have a, a nice group gathering here tonight, that when we, when Council Vice President and I run through docket review, we send extensive lists and questions over to the administration ahead of time to get any questions that we have about everything that appears before us. We gather the answers and then we distribute to council. So if council still has any outstanding questions that they will have, then they will ask the questions here tonight. So I don't want anyone to think that some of us are talking and some of us are not. We have the list of all the questions that we ask ahead of time. 24-508, Councilwoman Edwards?
Thank you. I had a question about this resolution. This is for a purchase of ammunition for the city of Trenton Police Department. And I just wanted some clarification on, on why we would need to purchase more ammunition? Is there a reason? Is there expiration on the ammunition we currently have? Are we low in inventory? Thank you.
Steve Wilson, Police Director. The ammunition that we purchase is for ongoing training. It's duty ammunition and training ammunition for current personnel and for our potential hires that we have so they can train and then also be outfitted with duty ammunition. So this is something that we do every year.
Thank you. That's all I need to know.
You're welcome.
You're going consent.
Consent agenda? Thank you. 24-509, Councilwoman Frisbee? And 24-510? That's for Director Douglas?
There we go. Kenneth Douglas Fire Director.
Thank you, Director. I just wanted to ask the question that, this talks about there are 11 sets of firefighter personal pieces of equipment, PPP, that we are getting. My question is, is this all that is needed to have all of our firefighters covered in proper protective gear?
Not all the firefighters. This grant was awarded by the DCA ARP. We applied for it. The maximum amount was 75,000. We were given 70,000, we're awarded 70,000. But it only covers the cost of 11 sets because of the cost factor for, from head to toe, from helmet, boots, hat, suspenders and so forth.
So what would be needed? How many more of our firefighters are not in proper protective gear?
Well, they all have proper protective gear, but I must admit the fact that we are in the process of trying to get some replaced next year in the next year's budget. So it is in abundance. So it is in abundance because it's been a lack of purchasing throughout some years that predate me.
Okay, we just want to make sure that all of our men and women are properly protected when they're running into protection.
Absolutely.
Does. Okay, thank you so much, I appreciate you, sir.
You're welcome.
Consent?
Consent, please.
Twenty-four, five, ten?
Five, ten, that's actually Maria Richardson, BA. Thank you, ma'am. So I really just want, I'm so much for this, I'm excited about it. I wanted to just have you once again to expound upon this. I think this is a fantastic move that we're going to have on our, on our part, but if you would expound for the sake of the public.
Absolutely, this resolution refers to a shared service agreement between the City of Trenton and the County of Mercer for the provision of hazmat services. For many, many years, our finest Department of Fire and Emergency Services has been providing those services for the county, but has not been compensated for. So this year, we enter in this agreement, we will receive payment from the County of Mercer. They will be paying for some of our expenses to, like, training and some of our expenses, recovery services, and some of our maintenance and repair to our equipment. So we are really excited about this. This is only one of couple of shared services agreements that we are entering into with the County of Mercer that will hopefully bring some savings to the city and will allow us to continue to improve with our services.
This is good news for our city. Thank you, I appreciate you.
Thank you. Consent? Thank you. Twenty-four, five, twenty, Councilwoman Williams.
Thank you very much, Council President. Is Dr. Mina Capelli in the room?
Yes.
Yes.
Oh, I'm sorry, I can see you now, thank you, sir. So my question regarding five, twenty, I actually have a couple of questions. The first one being, I'm really happy to see the 1.1 million dollar resolution to apply for and accept the grant if we get it. And I was wondering, would the money be used for any different lead prevention programs than what we're already doing to try to reach families in our city regarding lead? Particularly in the North Ward, of course, we have the greater percentage of pollution issues for our city.
Good evening, Dr. Diego Mina Capelli for the Department of Health and Human Services. The purpose of this grant is to provide following service for the City of Trenton. It is for public health nursing case management, assessment on household and environmental lead hazard home visits, including education, assessment of cultural and consumer products contributing to lead exposure, and best practices to reduce lead exposure and ensure healthy homes. The purpose of this grant will allow us to pay for the nurses, the staff, to bring all of these services to our community mainly.
Okay, and that's great to hear. As I know your staff has been working very, very hard to try to get the word out and do testing, et cetera, and it's been difficult at times to get testing completed, particularly with the students over at McKnight and the other schools grant. So I was wondering, are there any, are there any methods or any prevention ideas that you'd like to try that maybe we need additional funding for? Or maybe some of the 10% for cannabis tax revenue could go towards, since that's supposed to be for addressing and identifying healthcare disparities? Once we get that tax money?
At the moment, we're just enhancing the services that we have and trying to reach more of our residents. We can explore that in the future, but so right now, it's just enhancing our services.
Okay, well, thank you. If there's anything more that we can do in the future, please bring it to us. I'm sure everyone would love to hear it. Thank you for your time, doctor. Oh, this can go to consent agenda, ma'am.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I believe there's BA Richardson, Resolution twenty-four, five, thirty-five?
We are pulling that resolution.
Okay. So Council twenty-four, five, thirty-five has been pulled by the administration.
And we are pulling it because it's a duplicate, it's a duplicate.
Okay. Thank you. All right.
Okay, Madam President, on your call.
Thank you. You get in there. All right. May I have a motion to approve the following for consent agenda? Resolution twenty-four, four, seventy-seven, twenty-four, four, seventy-eight, twenty-four, four, seventy-nine, twenty-four, four, eighty, four, eighty-one, four, eighty-two, four, eighty-three, four, eighty-four, four, eighty-five, four, eighty-six, four, eighty-seven, four, eighty-eight, four, eighty-nine, four, ninety, four, ninety-one, four, ninety-two, four, ninety-three, four, ninety-four, four, ninety-five, four, ninety-six, four, ninety-seven, four, ninety-eight, four, ninety-nine, five hundred, five hundred and one, five hundred and two, five hundred and three, five hundred and four, five oh five, five oh six, five oh seven, five oh eight, five oh nine, five ten, five eleven, five twelve, five thirteen, five fourteen, five fifteen, five sixteen, five seventeen, five eighteen, five nineteen, five twenty, five twenty-one, five twenty-two, five twenty-three, five twenty-four, five twenty-five, five twenty-six, five twenty-seven, five twenty-eight, five twenty-nine, five thirty, five thirty-one, five thirty-two, five thirty-three, five thirty-four, five thirty-six, five thirty-seven, five thirty-eight, five three nine, five forty, five forty-one, five forty-two, five forty-three, five forty-four, five forty-five, five forty-six, five forty-seven, five forty-eight, five forty-nine, five fifty. That concludes the list, may I have a motion to approve for consent agenda?
Four, we, I'm sorry, Madam President, before we, four, eighty-one, did you put that in there as well?
Was this the consent?
I asked that because.
Oh, yeah, it's in there. Hold on. It's in there in the front.
Not just, it's the consent agenda so no one hears.
Right. Thank you, Councilwoman Frisbee. So the Councilwoman just brought to my attention that because of the magnitude of Resolution twenty-four, four, eighty-one, that we should read it out loud into the record, even though it is being placed on consent agenda. In the middle of me asking for this motion, Mr. Garcia?
Certainly.
No, I don't need you to read it, I need you to tell me, can we read it now? Or do we go ahead and keep going with what I just asked for?
I will, if you have a motion on the floor?
I asked for the motion, nobody said nothing yet.
But nobody has been motioned yet, then we can go ahead and read it now, I would imagine. I'll defer to Solicitor for order for that purpose.
Thank you. Resolution twenty-four, four, eighty-one. A resolution honoring and commending Trenton City Councilwoman Yasminelli Gonzalez upon her appointment to the Electoral College for the 2024 presidential election. Whereas the United States Constitution provides for the creation of the Electoral College, which is mandated and empowered to cast ballots for the election of the President and Vice President of the United States. And whereas Trenton City Councilwoman Yasminelli Gonzalez was appointed as one of 14 Democratic electors for the 2024 presidential and vice presidential election. And whereas, on December the 5th, 2024, Councilwoman Gonzalez appeared at the State House in her capacity as an elector and cast her ballots for Democratic candidates Kamala Harris and Tim Walz as President and Vice President of the United States. And whereas appointment as a member of the Electoral College is a tremendous honor with unparalleled historical significance and not only reflects highly upon Councilwoman Yasminelli Gonzalez, but upon the City of Trenton and its residents. And whereas it is proper and fitting that Councilwoman Yasminelli Gonzalez be recognized and congratulated upon this momentous achievement, now therefore be resolved by the City Council of the City of Trenton that it does hereby extend its heartfelt congratulations to Councilwoman Yasminelli Gonzalez for the honor and recognition this appointment has brought to her, the Trenton City Council, and the City of Trenton. And is further resolved that this resolution shall take effect pursuant to law.
Thank you, thank you, everyone, thank you, Council President, my colleagues. You know, I didn't want this, but thank you. Thank you, though. Thank you, everyone.
That being said, may I have a motion to approve all of the resolutions that I had formally named into consent agenda?
Still moved.
Second.
Roll call, Councilwoman Edwards?
Yes.
Vice President Figaro Kettner.
Yes.
Councilwoman Frisbee?
Yes.
Councilwoman Gonzalez?
Yes.
Councilwoman Williams?
Her hand is up. Yes.
Thank you.
Sorry.
Council President Feliciano?
Yes.
Motion carried. And Madam President, moving on to our lone ordinance for first reading. Ordinance twenty-four dash zero seventy-seven. An ordinance providing for the implementation in this, for the implementation in the City of Trenton, a five-year tax exemption and abatement pursuant to NJSA 40A:21-1 at SEC and approving property tax abatement for residential properties in need of rehabilitation. Madam President, if you want to ask for a motion to approve.
Yeah, may I have a motion to approve?
Still moved, second.
Roll call, Councilwoman Edwards?
Yes.
Vice President Figaro Kettner.
Yes.
Councilwoman Frisbee?
Yes.
Councilwoman Gonzalez?
Yes.
Councilwoman Williams?
Yes.
Council President Feliciano?
Yes.
Motion carried. President, at this time, moving on with the agenda. I believe we've reached a point of public comment regarding the DOJ, Department of Justice Police report.
Okay, thank you. At this time, again, I stated that we were moving the, the public comment remarks up first. Along with that, any council person at this time that wants to make a comment to the public regarding this or your sentiments, you now have that opportunity. Each will be given two minutes to say what it is that you would have to say. And then at that time, we will open it up to the public, I mean, to the, yeah, to the public to come first, and then the mayor to follow. Any council members have anything that they would like to say at this time to the public about this? About the DOJ report, that is where we are. Councilwoman Edwards?
Thank you.
Yes. Two minutes is the time per council person, Mr. Garcia, thank you.
Noted.
Made my anxiety level, like. I just want to say first and foremost, thank you to the Department of Justice and to those who had a part in activating the investigation. I think that it was long overdue and it was something that the city needed to shed light and provide transparency on the happenings in our police department. Many people have been victims to a lot of injustices out of our, the police, police department, including police officers. I won't exclude them because our minority officers are suffering. There is a blue wall in our police department and a lot of people are afraid to speak up. A lot of people in our community have been afraid to speak up. And this investigation provided an opportunity for people to do that in a safe manner. And even still, a lot of people still have fears to speak up. I have received countless messages and emails and phone calls over the last year since that DOJ investigation was announced. And I sympathize with them because I too was a victim of this police department as a teenager. My family members were. I watched injustices happening, excessive force, beatings, chasing, shootings. It's no secret that this police department has not lived up to the standards that our community needs. We need safety. And a lot of us have not been safe or have felt safe for a long time. And I will not sugarcoat that. So I have spoken with our mayor and he is very open. So I will say that I have personally requested us to form a civilian complaint review board as I have been a part of the demands. I have been leading and a part of protests and rallies at our police department over the past decade, and that's no secret either. So I stand before you as your representative to let you know this is not going to fall between the cracks. And I will make sure, along with my other council colleagues, that we will have justice. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Any other council people? Council Vice President, and then Councilwoman Gonzalez?
Good evening. I, I concur with Councilwoman Edwards' sentiments with regard to this. I'm glad that the investigation was done and I'm glad that aspects of Trenton policing have come out and come to light and have been highlighted in such a way where they're spelled out, where it's not just accusatory, it's not just pointing the finger, it's not just saying, oh, you see this video, this is what happens. This was an actual investigation into particular acts and not all acts, as we understand, have been investigated. This has been going on for much longer than it, than it needs to have gone on. And we need to, we can understand and be clear that this is not just a local issue, this is a national issue where we have cultural issues when it comes to policing and residents. This is beyond training. We're trained, our police officers are trained in the academy, but that training goes out the window half the time when they become, when they come on the force and they have supervisors and other superiors who are not working ethically, who are not leading in the way that they need to be leading and are looking in other ways. We have officers coming onto the force, quite frankly, some that should not be officers and, and are doing things that they know are wrong, but it's accepted. It's an acceptance across the board. That's where we really need to be paying attention when we're looking at this and when we're trying to make changes within our police force. The relationships need to be built. We have a blatant disrespect across the board between our citizens, our residents, and our police officers in arrogance. And I'm really glad that this came out, I'm glad it's being addressed. We need to talk about accountability and I'm just, I'm elated to hear everybody's responses tonight, thank you.
Thank you, Council President. So in light of the investigation, as we all know, it is very troubling to find out all of the findings that were there. But I want to take the time out to say thank you to the Department of Justice for opening up this investigation and to all of those who actually participated. I know there were a lot of community discussions and a lot of the community were allowed to have input as well as the investigations that were going on in the department. But I also just want to take a moment just to thank our lower enforcement officers because you do do a job that is, is challenging. And I want to say, I know that every officer in there is not a bad cop. So I want to put that out there as well because we do have some great officers who serve in our police department. However, all of the, all of the things that we found out, and not that any of it, most of it was a surprise to me to know that some of the things that were happening. And so we need the accountability, we need an apology. We need someone to take the responsibility of what has occurred in this, in this department. As far as the trainings, as I'm reading through the report, it said it failed to provide crucial, crucial trainings to our police officer. Now that right there in itself is like, why are we not training our police officers? And as we know, this world is evolving, things are changing. And so we need our police officers to also be trained as well. It starts at the top. You know, the leadership, we got to take responsibility, we got to take accountability for what is going on. Make sure that this is addressed. Make sure that this is addressed, make sure that someone is, is, is held accountable. Um, I'm finding out also just from different conversations that we have police officers who have blatantly and admitted and been found guilty on certain things and then get sent back into the police department. But then they're in internal affairs, it has a, a layup job and is not even put back out on patrol. These things are not fair. These things are, it's just, it's just unbelievable that I found this out the other day that someone would actually go into an internal affairs, uh, position and was found guilty of doing some harmful, harmful things to some of our people. So again, I do, I'm committed, um, to working alongside my colleagues. Obviously, our law enforcement, our administration, the community, to ensure that these changes that we have are enacted quickly. We have to, we all have to take accountability. We have to make sure things are being done, um, correctly. So I stand on, um, the side of our community and we gotta definitely make sure that things are done better in the future as far as our police department. Our community deserves to feel safe. Um, and so we want to make sure that happens soon. Thank you.
Mr. Garcia, is the clock broke? Was the clock broke? Okay. Councilwoman Williams.
Thank you, Council President. Uh, really wish I could be there tonight, um, but I had to be away at a work conference that I could not force move. But, um, I'm just gonna be plain spoken as best I can. I'm disgusted and embarrassed by what was reported. What was reported was unconscionable. It should never happen again in this city. All Trentonians should feel safe and respected and know that their constitutional rights will not be violated. And in this day and age, our police are under great scrutiny. And sadly, that is as it should be. There are bad officers, but there are many, many good officers too. Most of the Trenton Police Department is, it's full of good officers and they deserve our respect, our hope and our prayers. But the bad officers on our force are destroying the image of our city to others. And while they destroy the sense of safety and security for many Trentonians, and that should never happen. I too look for an apology. I too look for reforms. And we need this Trenton Police Department to start the reforms as soon as possible if they haven't already started. We also need the Trenton Police Department to begin walking beats again as they did long ago. They must know our citizens, they must know our residents before the residents have to call the non-emergency number or nine-one-one. Most citizens do want to know their police officers who are serving them. And walking beats is an investment in public safety, or used to be known as community policing. Future training, as my colleague stated, uh, must happen, but it has to be in person. It can't just be something on a computer. In addition, there's obviously a need for more cultural, uh, cultural competency training. And it's necessary to cover many groups. It's necessary to cover immigrant community, LGBTQ people and other identified groups. And I look forward to hearing what our thirty, sixty, ninety-day plan is and then going forward. So thank you very much and let's improve this city and let's improve our police department.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Councilwoman Frisbee.
Thank you, Council President. So I'm appreciative of the DOJ report. Um, I was there when the AG came to town and they asked for our young folks and the people in the room to come up and speak about what's going on. And I recall a list, a line of individuals who came up. Um, and as they took notes, it surprised me how almost half of the room stood up with a, um, a complaint. I am in, uh, complete agreement with my colleagues. We have a great deal of officers that I would, I do trust with my life. We have a great deal who are good officers. And those officers, we need to make sure that they don't feel like they're being beaten down or beat up upon. But for those that are doing things that have come out in this report, we are not going to pacify that. They have to be held accountable and just like we would have to be held accountable. So our community deserves to feel safe. Our community deserves to know that those who are, uh, held to the highest standard of holding the law, that the law is going to be upheld with them as well, that there are no two sets of law, that one that are for them and one that's for us. So, um, I'm grateful for the report. I'm really shocked at a lot of stuff that came out of it. I am, um, disheartened. And my, uh, thoughts, as with everything, um, as we are in this technology age, ready or not, cameras are out, so the truth is going to come out one way or the other. So whether you want it to come out, whether you're ready for it to come out, whether you have a, um, a badge or not, your truth is going to be everybody else's truth, especially when they can put it on Facebook, when they can put it on social media. So I look forward to what is going to come of this in our city moving forward and growing, um, stronger because we have this.
Thank you, Councilwoman. So I'd like to say thank you to the DOJ, um, for the report. I want to say thank you to the mayor and the administration for cooperating and doing what it is and answering questions. And to those that came forward and spoke up, thank you for that as well. Thank you to all the good men and women that serve on Trenton Police, um, and doing your job every day to protect and serve. We appreciate you. Page two of the report says Trenton has paid out more than seven million dollars since 2021 to resolve lawsuits stemming from accusations of officer misconduct. Some Trentonians have lost faith in their police department due to these continued failures. It goes on to say, while TBD's policies generally follow standards set by the New Jersey Attorney General, we found that officers do not adhere to these mandatory requirements. Reform will require ensuring that TBD has procedures to enforce these standards and measure compliance. Page thirteen at the bottom, TBD's unconstitutional practices deeply impact the Trenton community. It is time out for the nonsense here in the city of Trenton. Everyone needs to be held accountable. Again, kudos to those that do the good things, but to the bad, if you want to steal time, if you want to beat people for no reason, if you want to disrespect and talk down to people, then you need to go. It is beyond the point of a slap on the wrist. Yes, I do believe that training is important. But if they're not listening to the training that is being put down and if the training is not being enforced, then we are wasting everyone's time in the process. I do think that mental health needs to be addressed with these police officers. They do need to have some kind of routine check-ins to make sure that they're okay. They're out in the street all the time, they're seeing some pretty graphic and bad things. I don't know how I would feel seeing someone being shot, stabbed or anything. And then I have to get back up and go back out and continue to work again and again. There is no excuse for disrespect. There is no excuse for hurting an innocent person. There is no excuse for excessive force. I went through the police civilian academy with my colleagues up here. We learned about excessive force. Taking advantage of your position is not right. It's not fair. And it's not going to continue to take place here in the city of Trenton. There have to be consequences to these actions. Thank you. At this time, we will now hear from the public. You have the sheet?
I do.
Again, to those that are going to come forward, we are sticking to the recommendations that are here in the report. And we had copies of the report out, um, on the table for those that didn't have it. We're sticking to the recommendations. Um, we are here to hear what it is that you have to say. As far as these go, what we agree with, what you disagree with, what you would like to see, um, in place to help us to collectively figure out what it is that we can do to help put practices in place to help our city. Mr. Garcia.
Certainly. One moment, Madam President, we do have two spaces left.
Okay, every person that speaks gets four point five minutes to speak. That totals forty-five minutes. We will hold to the time, Mr. Garcia and Mr. Osaria, we will hold to the time. At four point five, we're shutting the mics off so we can move and keep this timely.
At four minutes and thirty seconds, we will mute.
Thank you. The recommended measures start on page thirty-eight in the back of the report. Mr. Garcia.
So I'm sorry. What was that?
I was saying to the public that the recommended remedial measures start page thirty-eight of the report. Thank you. And council, all, we all have copies up here as well. Thank you.
First person for public comment for DOJ Justice Report is Halbert Clark. Please do state your name and address for the record, sir.
Good evening. My name is Halbert Clark. I'm from Trenton Branch, Peel Box thirteen fifty-five, Trenton, New Jersey, zero eight six zero seven. Good evening, members of Trenton City Council. My name is Halbert Clark and I stand before you as the Criminal Justice Co-Chair of the Trenton NAACP, representing the voices of the countless residents who demand accountability and change in how our poli, how police department operates. We are all aware of the findings of the Department of Justice. We with the Trenton NAACP speak to you today with two specific demands. First, Police Director Steve Wilson must be removed. The facts are clear. Director Wilson has overseen the department during much of the troubling five-year lookback period. His history is tied to troubling units like the proactive unit, Alpha Squad and the Jump Our Boys Unit. Units infamous for their aggressive and harmful tactics. More concerning, he elevated colleagues from those very units, promoting them to leadership positions, including that of Internal Affairs. This is the same Internal Affairs Division implicated in recent lawsuits for both within and outside of the department, covering up allegation of sexual harassment, racial discrimination and creating barriers for citizens attempting to file complaints. This unit's behavior mirrors that, excuse me, mirrors what we've seen with the New Jersey State Police and highlights of systematic failure under Wilson's leadership. Let's be clear, this is Steve Wilson's police department and it is failing us. He must step down or you as our city leaders must take action to ensure his removal. Second, we need a community-led police review board. Some might argue that New Jersey courts have declared these boards unconstitutional. But let's set the record straight. The issue isn't their existence. It's about who holds subpoena power over the police. And here's the truth, you, the city council, already have that subpoena power. The twenty twenty Newark Civil, uh, civilian review board court ruling itself acknowledges the subpoena power is tied to your legislative authority. And I quote from this case ruling itself, the city council itself has subpoena power and that power is inherent and tied to the power of legislate. City council retains its own power to issue subpoena and may be motivated to exercise that power. You have the ability and the responsibility to create a community-led review board, one empowered to oversee the police, issue subpoenas and hold the department accountable. Imagine a review board staffed by your colleagues, armed with your legislative authority, working along, alongside you to ensure justice and transparency. This isn't just possible, it's necessary. Council, our community is watching. We're tired of broken trusts, systematic failures and leaders who fail to act. Now is the time for your courage, for your accountability and for a Trenton Police Department that serves and respects all its residents. Thank you.
Cordelia Staten.
Cordelia Staten, three ten Gardner Avenue. As a former elected councilperson, I am deeply concerned about the current state of policing in our community, particularly in light of the recent DOJ report. When I reflect on the history of our efforts to bring accountability and reform to the police department, I am reminded of how much progress we made, but also how much work remains to be done. In nineteen ninety-nine, as president of the Trenton Council of Civic Associations, I organized the Yes We Can Residents Coalition in response to the police department's systemic failures, poor response times, overtime abuse, disciplinary discriminatory, I'm sorry, promotion practices, excessive force and a lack of community trust. We demanded action and together we succeeded, under the leadership of Mayor Douglas H. Palmer, to restructure the city's public safety department, creating civilian oversight and establishing the Citizens Police Advisory Councils, better known as CPACs. These groups meet, uh, the, these groups are assigned to each ward and they meet monthly to this day. They were critical, these were critical steps in ensuring that the police department was accountable to the people it was meant to serve. Now, after all these years, it is disheartening to see that many of the same issues persist. Our community deserves a police force that is transparent, accountable, well-trained and responsive to its needs. We can't afford to return to a time when the voices of residents were ignored and worse silenced. As a former councilperson, I feel it is crucial for the current city leaders, both legislative and administrative, to take immediate and meaningful action to restore the public trust in our police force. The findings in the DOJ report are a wake-up call and we must act swiftly to address the issues at hand. We need leadership that holds the police accountable and ensures they operate with the integrity and respect this Trenton community deserves. If the current leadership is unable to bring about meaningful change, then it is time to seek new leadership. It is essential that the community remains engaged and continues to push for the reforms necessary to ensure that law enforcement serves all the people equitably and responsibly. Together, we can make real change and build a police force that reflects the values of fairness, justice and respect for all. It is imperative that the police department is, it is very, it is imperative that the police department is well-trained and prepared to serve people. The police department, their budget is almost eighty percent of the city's budget. We spend a lot of money on the police department. We really do. And it's true, not, it's not everybody, but there are some. And they are so deeply rooted in this thing. I'm talking from nineteen ninety-nine. I don't know where you guys were at that time. That's a long time ago. We were in the streets. It was just crazy. We had to have a special election. It was just a mess in this town. The neighborhoods that, uh, suffered, uh, with poor response times and, uh, police, uh, would, uh, uh, showed no confidentiality when we were, uh, when people would give them tips or whatnot on, um, you know, crimes and think, just a, it was just a complete mess. I'm not even going to get into it because I don't want that thing to go off on me. But I am telling you, in all seriousness, something that needs to be done and by all means necessary. If you need to step up and do, you know, make some hard decisions along with the mayor, you're gonna have to do it because that's what we keep, you know, that's what it's all about, right? Making tough decisions. Doesn't have to always be popular, but it definitely has to be right. Thank you.
Jason Woodhead.
Good evening, council. Thank you for allowing us to speak. We're designated representatives of the Trans Superior Officers Association, the SOA. It's comprised of the supervising ranks, which consists of the sergeants, lieutenants and captains of the Trenton Police Department. My name is Jason Woodhead. I'm the president of the association and I'm accompanied by uh, the association vice presidents Miguel Acosta and Bethesda Stokes. The members of the SOA are dedicated to improving the Trenton Police Department through our commitment to support efforts for meaningful reform and accountability. While we respect the concerns raised by the DOJ, it is essential that our approach to reform is fair, balanced and guided by data. We would like to schedule an open meeting, open forum, to address any concerns or questions that you may have. We stand here before the public and council members, the challenges facing the, uh, Trenton Police Department are serious, but they're not insurmountable. First, we must address staffing shortages to ensure the department can meet the demands of our community. Second, we must hold external entities such as the DCA accountable for decisions that undermine departmental efficiency and supervision. And third, we must pursue reform through collaborative, collaborative, data-driven solutions that balance public safety, officer morale and fiscal responsibility. Superior Officers Association remain, remains fully committed to working with the council, administration and the public to implement these reforms and achieve our shared goal of safer. to implement these reforms and achieve our shared goal of a safer and stronger Trenton. Thank you for your time.
Um, excuse me. Faranaaz Shamim.
Hi, my name is Faranaaz Shamim. I live at 49 Myrtle Ave. And I'm here with the great in Trenton, uh, DCF, uh, DSA. I just want to start off by saying, working at St. Francis Medical Center, especially during the outbreak of COVID-19, has instilled in me a shakeable sense of duty. Duty to protect, to serve, to be versatile and think on your feet, to be charitable, and to not see one life as more valuable than another. No guns involved, no form of strangulation, no need for violence. On April 3rd, just one month before George Floyd's murder, that would shock the nation and create waves internationally, I became a witness to the same exact crime carried out by Trenton Public Department. To watch someone clearly having a mental health episode, literally screaming for help, not harming anyone, and begging for his life as police officers tackle him is something that still haunts me now. I could only manage to take a picture at the moment. It did not even register to me that his immobilized body equaled death by homicide. Stephen Dolchamore should still be alive. He was instead killed by Trent PD on hospital property. No amount of sensitivity training can end the systemic injustice that is caused by our police officers who run the streets with no accountability, contributing to for-profit prisons that capitalize on modern-day slavery. There is no rehabilitation, no justice to be found here. We do not want another George Floyd or Stephen Dolchamore. Many Trentonians are not strangers to trauma. Many are living paycheck to paycheck, struggling, impoverished, battling addiction and mental health issues. We must treat them with dignity and compassion. We must replace armed police officers with mental health professionals who can actually tend to the sensitive needs of our community. I have worked with my fellow healthcare workers to de-escalate risky situations that create an immediate solution that would protect the welfare of all. This is something that our armed police officers are simply not equipped to provide. The nature of their presence alone creates distrust and extreme power imbalance. I urge you all to consider social workers, crisis response teams, and caregivers in helping professions or emergency services to ensure our public safety. The city of Trenton would do greater justice to its people by allocating funds not for the expansion of the Trenton Police Department or sensitivity trainings under the guise of improving the department, but instead to creating better resources for our community in a way that actually improves our day-to-day lives. Less work to end police brutality by reducing police funding in the first place. And instead, let's invest the, in the needs of Trentonians to keep them safe and content. We can accomplish this by providing, by prioritizing the right to affordable housing, affordable healthcare, better funding for our community resources such as schools, libraries, museums, and recreational facilities. Let us change the narrative to move away from violence and towards collective liberation.
Victor Irazari.
Victor Irazari, 19 Moreland Avenue, Trenton, New Jersey. The first thing I'd like to say is, uh, before you have a police reform, you need social reform. Officers can't have, uh, with so much training. And, um, I realize, uh, once you get with so much training, you're, um, in other words, uh, looked down upon as the enemy. Then you need to realize that sometimes when there's a, there's a, there's actual report that, uh, some officers hate, hate their jobs. And I said some of them need to be more or less a truck drivers, uh, you know, piece of delivery persons than officers. There's a study that I learned from Mercy County Community College in, uh, social, uh, criminal justice that some officers went three years or after three years, they started hating the same people of their own race. And therefore to flex and, uh, chastise that people, they take it out on everyone. And then there's, uh, gathering of those, a congregation of those who feel that way, like the so-called people that make the paper, the cowboys and so forth. All right, you know, uh, so again, I say, before there's, uh, along with police reform, with these social reform, which means what? If they need training, then the people on the streets, the drug dealers, the gangsters, the prostitutes, the pimps, they need training too. How to conduct themselves in public. So therefore they don't stand out so much in front of people's homes and, uh, making our communities look bad to the point where police doesn't have to respond. And there's another, along with that study, that says that, uh, there are two professions that have the most highest alcoholism rate. And that's the priests, Catholic priests, and police, police officers. All right, so both stay drunk doing God's work. I say that, that law enforcement, you can't, you can't separate law enforcement from religion. Law enforcement and religion go together to me. And as I studied in criminal justice also, that that's the war of good and evil between so-called God and devil. It was actually between the Travis Shabazz, the so-called Africans now, their name, they were the Travis Shabazz, the Travis Shabazz, the so-called Africans, Africans in Africa. And then the other part that Lucifer is a group of people, uh, black Europeans that, uh, came on the planet Earth about eight, about nine thousand years ago. So they clashed. So now you, when you say law enforcement, then you saying, when you talking about law enforcement, you talking about the war of good and evil. All right, okay, that's all over planet Earth. A while ago, someone said that this problem that we have in Trenton is nationwide. So therefore it starts with politics from the attorney, uh, yours Attorney General and the President, all the way down to the, to the governor, I mean, to the mayor and the chief of police. So we can't do with so much, unless, if they, they, if they need, he need to be replaced with who? We going, from, in, in America, if this problem is from the east to the west, north to the south, well, you gonna get some product, someone qualified enough to not only give us 50%, give us 100%. Not only 65%, give us 75%, all right? First of all, think about that, all right? And then they'll leave. And on top of that, then if that problem is from east to the west, then it's coming from top down. So how is anyone gonna get 100% satisfaction and, uh, everyone's content? Now, I noticed that we are in a, in an era of percentages that if 99% of the people are satisfied, that 1%, if that 1% is not satisfied, that doesn't matter. Then that falls as the underclass, no one cares about. But they're humans too. And they're the ones that you see at these areas, uh, soup lines and social services, looking for help. They get their help, go back into the streets. There's nothing there for them because nothing has been upgraded so they can continue. If they gonna be criminals, good criminals that don't get caught. So therefore you don't need the police coming around to handle pedo, uh, petty, petty crimes. And therefore those officers who are not happy with their jobs.
That is your time, thank you. Marwa Kurshid, did I get that right? Thank you.
Um, my name is Marwa Kurshid. I live at 32 Joanie Maggio Drive. Um, I want to speak on behalf of another Trenton resident named Taylor Davis. She lives at 32 Almhurst Avenue. We're both members of Greater Trenton DSA. Um, this is her statement. As a Trenton resident for eight years, I am deeply frustrated and concerned with the Trenton Police Department's negligence, particularly in providing timely court dates. My own unresolved court issues are a direct result of this lack of competence, which raises serious questions about accountability and efficiency. This issue leads to unknown warrants and arrests for people that are unknowingly a victim of their actions. This issue is compounded by the fact that the Division of Justice has already acknowledged that the Trenton Police Department's history of discriminatory practices and the significant racial tensions within the department. These assist, these systemic, systematic issues undermine trust in law enforcement and disproportionately affect residents of color, further straining our community. Recently, I learned that Trenton plans to allocate more funds to hire new police officers, even waiving the requirement for a written test. While public safety is critical, ensuring that officers are properly trained, qualified, and free from bias should be top priority. Hiring unqualified officers without addressing the department's system, systemic issues will only perpetuate existing problems. Rather than focusing solely on expanding the police force, these funds could better be invested in addressing the root causes of crime and community challenges. Expanding access to mental health advocacy, hiring social workers, and increasing support for other public servants could create lasting positive change and help rebuild trust between residents and the systems meant to service. Thank you.
Joe Marchika.
All right, take two. So. My name is Joe Marchika, again, uh, Greater Trenton DSA, uh, and I'll get straight to the point. 10 Sheffield Road. The Department of Justice report, uh, confirmed what a lot of folks in and around Trenton already knew is that the Trenton Police Department, um, has a habit and a preponderance of brutal and violent behavior towards the residents of Trenton and for folks, towards folks who were coming from out of town and who are in the area. We can, the, what comes to the forefront of my mind, as Nas had mentioned, was Stephen Dolchamore, as well as the police murder of Joseph R. And the maiming and paralyzation of Judge Juan Henderson when he was sitting in a parked car in 2022 and was shot by plainclothes police officers. Otherwise, we, we know what they are, they're jump out boys, right? So what I want to pose to this council is, is just talk a little bit about why this keeps happening and has kept happening, not just in Trenton, but around the entire country. 2023 was the deadliest year on record for police killings since 2013. Think about that, we had George Floyd in 2020, right? There's all these uprisings, there's all of this momentum to try to do better with public safety. What, what went wrong? And in short, all of that energy was snuffed out and diverted towards a reform approach that was used as an excuse to funnel money to police departments that didn't fundamentally change how they interact with our communities. Because the core of policing as an institution is historically based in violence and violent white supremacy. It started out as slave patrols, it started out as violent union busting. And that core, the culture at the core of it is still there. So you can have good people who go into the police department and try to do the right thing and improve things. But it becomes an us against the world mentality. And they're forced to cape for bastards, excuse my French. So I don't see how feasibly we can reform an institution like this where the purpose of the institution is not to provide real public safety. And what this city needs, what this community needs is real public safety that actually prioritizes its residents and their health and their well-being. You guys already have the model for crisis response in the city. It just needs to be scaled up, you have community street teams. These are non-violent responders that get funding to go and prevent violence from happening and be in the community to de-escalate problematic situations. This is a model built on a foundation that's been around since 1988 with the Kahoots model in Oregon, in Eugene, Oregon. They have never had any of their personnel in this program hurt or killed over the entire existence. That's over three decades. And they're, they've saved the city of Eugene, Oregon, about 2.2 million dollars a year. This is with a small footprint. This is with about three to eight percent of their calls that they get going, uh, diverted to police. There's another estimate, I think it's a 20% of the calls that now go into their public safety, uh, call reception area. I forget the, the proper name, but the model's there. It's here in Trenton, you guys have it. Just fund it. Expand funding for that. We don't need a fifth of Trenton city budget going to police that don't make us safer. The core of the institution does not make people safe. We need to reduce the role of police in public safety because we are operating with a public safety toolbox that's full of hammers in that city. And when you have a toolbox that's full of hammers, every single Trentonian looks like a damn nail. We need to put a diverse set of tools in that toolbox and we need to use them for the appropriate situation. You want public safety experts deployed for the situations that they are best suited for. You want mental health professionals, you want social workers, you want de-escalation experts. We can't train any profession to do all of these things. It's too many different things. You would be in training all the time and you still wouldn't have all the expertise. You still wouldn't have all the experience. So we're putting an unfair burden on an institution that's not meant to do any of the things we're telling them they need to do. The slogan's supposed to be protect and serve, but I think the evidence is pretty clear at this point that this approach to public safety is bass ackwards and has failed. This approach to public safety in Trenton has failed. We need a different approach that's evidence-based, that's holistic, and actually prioritizes the well-being of the people in the city. And I'll, I'll say it again, you have the model. You don't need to overthink this. Don't invest in training that is a dead-end approach, that is an excuse to suck away money because we'll be back here in a year, we'll be back here in two years, we'll be back here in six months. I don't know when it'll be, but it'll happen and things won't be better. There will be another report, there will be another incident, there will be another police killing. And everyone will wonder, why didn't Trenton seek? A new approach, thank you.
Mr. Gersky?
Yes.
I'm sorry, we just remind everybody and thank you, everyone, for your comments thus far, that when you come up, um, we want to know where you're from, not just the name of the organization, um, that you represent. So we need to know everybody's address when they come forward to speak, right? Thank you.
Stuart Alterman.
Good evening, council president, Madam President, members of council. Mr. Bridges, how are you? Mr. Mayor. I'm Stuart Alterman and I represent PBA Local 11A, the Superior Officers Association. I've had the privilege of representing the PBA here in Trenton since 1998 in various matters. I've heard a lot of discussion today, I've heard a lot of discussion tonight about the DOJ report. I read it, I disagree with points, I agree with certain points, I'm disappointed in certain points. It's an unsigned, unauthored document, it's not even dated. It's unfortunate. But I think it's important for you all to know that we as the PBA have come to the city and have come, more importantly, to the DCA, to the Division of Community Affairs, because we are all hostage to the Division of Community Affairs who wields the purse, who wields the purse strings in this city and cities like Trenton. And Trenton needs money. Money will fix a lot of the problems in the police department. And money will fix a lot of the problems here in the city. Trenton does not get its fair share of the dollars that are spent around the state. Very importantly, is the fact that the police department, in particular, is underfunded, under-budgeted, understaffed, under-trained, and undersupervised. We acknowledge that. We acknowledge that our training has been abysmal for several years. Not because of a lack of talent, not because of a lack of interest or enthusiasm, but because of a lack of money, because Trenton, we're in Trenton, it makes me crazy to think that we're sitting here in the capital of the state and they can't figure out how to spend money in this city when they come here and they pass bills on nonsense and things that don't matter, when things that matter here have yet to be funded. Now let's talk about training for a moment. Training teaches police officers how to act, how to conduct themselves, how to go about their jobs. Madam Councilperson, I heard exactly what you said. I think you're, Ms. Edwards. Training is extremely important. Training will allow police officers to conduct themselves in a professional manner up to the legitimate standards of the citizenry, of council, of the mayor, and amongst their peers. Very importantly, without the money for proper training, it doesn't happen. Trenton Police Department also suffers from a lack of equipment, from a lack of technology, from a lack of 2024 cyber technology. Why is that? How does that happen? It happens because the state of New Jersey, the DCA, underfunds and doesn't fund the city and the departments in the city. the city and the departments in the city. That's the problem. So while we can all point the fingers at one another, I can say the police are great, you can say the police are not so great, we all really do have to come together. We have to come together and we have to find a pathway to convince those individuals down the street to start spending money here in order to improve the situation, particularly because we're all talking about the police department and the police department. Public safety is the number one thing that government has to perform. Marbury versus Madison specifically states, there's two things that government provides. One, public safety, two, education. Without public safety, you can't have a country, without education, you can't have a country. The two of them together, adequately funded and supported, makes a country and makes us all together, and we come in as one, not different people. I think we all want the same thing here. We want safety, we want integrity, we want honesty, we want transparency, transparency. And with that, Madam Council President, I ask you to assist us in going to the Thank you.
I'm sorry, so what town are you from?
Marlton.
Marlton.
Thank you.
Mr. Naim Baker.
I'm sorry, so we have to have order in the room, ma'am, I understand that we're passionate about this, but we need order in the room, thank you so much, I appreciate you, I appreciate you, Soror.
Yen and Baker, I'm representing Visionary Philanthropy Group, Inc., and I'm also representing the NAACP, I'm the president, I'm the chairman of the Trenton Prison Branch of the NAACP. First of all,
Sorry, I just have your address, I'm sorry.
47 Clag Avenue.
Thank you.
All right, first of all, I would like to thank the whole council members. Great evening to everyone, and also gentlemen here in front of me. So today I would like to begin with, you know, stating that I read the whole 45-page DOJ report. You know, I used to be in the streets, right? I came into the streets 1993, and you know, there was a system that the police had, right? And that was, they would jump, they would jump out, you know, on all the drug dealers, you know, unconstitutionally. And I endured, you know, a lot of brutal beatings. For example, if I was selling drugs and I got caught, I mean, before I got caught, sometimes I would run, and you know, they would chase me down and beat me up, right? So this was an ongoing thing, don't get me wrong, if we sold drugs, we were wrong. However, you know, when we ran and we got caught, no questions asked, we were, you know, getting beat with flash, flashlights, whatever it was. So to get to my point, you know, we thought it was normal. You know, me and my comrades that were in the streets, we thought it was normal to, you know, get beat by the police when, you know, they would catch us, right? So fast forward now that I'm on the other side of the law and I'm a law-abiding citizen now, you know, I'm conscious, I'm no longer ignorant, I'm like, wow, you know, we were being violated. Yes, we were wrong for selling drugs, but you know, there was no reason to beat us. So to elaborate on the 45-page report, you know, there were some things that stuck out with me. In the streets, let's say about 2003, 2004, 2005, 2006, the Trenton was flooded with the gang movement, right? And being in the streets, there was a lot of ignorance and violence, killings going on. So I used to, you know, go to a lot of the gangsters that was in control, right? And, you know, talk to them about the robberies, the violence and things like that that were going on under their control. And a lot of them, you know, would say, I would say, you know, can you control your, you know, your gang members or whatever the case may be? And a lot of them wouldn't want to hear what I said. So to get to my point, they would, you know, co-sign everything. So that 45-page report, it wasn't surprising to me, first and foremost, right? It wasn't surprising to me, but what I'm saying is, they co-signed a lot, the gangsters in the streets, right? And in that, one of the key factors in that 45-page report was that the sergeants, you know, the lieutenants and the other higher-ups, they said in that report that they would read the report and just sign off on it. And that was very, you know, touching to me because they didn't, they didn't reprimand the officers or anything like that for the wrongdoings that they did. Basically, and that stood out to me, and that was the same thing that was going on in the streets. So yes, the streets, you know, it was organized illegal crime, but reading that report, if the, you know, the officers, the lieutenants and whoever, you know, co-signed those wrongdoings, then, you know, that's wrong. So overall, to end my point, you know, we need accountability, you know, people got killed. So we need people to be accountable and, you know, leadership needs to be accountable. And my point is, you know, last thing I want to say is, we need accountability, just like everyone else, myself was accountable for my wrongdoings.
Ralph Cologne.
Hello, my name is Ralph, I live in Hamilton, 265 Watson Avenue, Hamilton, South, New Jersey. It's a privilege to speak in front of you, council. I am a proud native of Trenton, I'll say it again, I'm a proud native of Trenton. And I want to thank all the police officers that do put themselves on the line on a daily basis. I have experienced, at least unjust, I've been, I have experienced unconstitutional practices in the past. And I want to come to Trenton, I want to come to Trenton, I want to feel safe. We're already hampered by crime in Trenton. I want to be able to trust the police in Trenton. The city of Trenton is hurting. Lawsuits hamper the city, that money paid out could be used to re-legalize the city. The unconstitutional problems are an issue. I'm not going to sit here and tell you how many times I've been, I've been wrong profiled. The police work for the community, why is it that I often feel that they serve us while protecting themselves at times? We definitely need a board to oversee these constitutional issues and problems that are arising and continue to happen around the city. Thank you. I am also Representative DCA. Thank you.
That's all of them. Madam President, that's
I'm sorry.
Thank you. Thank you, everyone, for coming forward and speaking tonight and giving us your feedback, certainly we've taken it, and we will digest it and meet about it. Now we'll hear from our mayor, Mayor Reed Gussiora, with his response about the DOJ report.
Thank you, Council President, and I acknowledge our great former mayor, Douglas Palmer. The gentleman who spoke before, as well as Councilwoman State, acknowledged that this problem has been around. It didn't happen yesterday, it didn't happen under Steve Wilson's watch, it didn't happen under my administration or anyone else's administration. So I got to acknowledge the U.S. Justice Department report, and the findings are indeed troubling. It's important to acknowledge that the city has fully cooperated with the investigation. I met with the U.S. Attorney from New Jersey on a number of occasions. Their team has come to City Hall, I've gone to the U.S. Justice Department's offices myself. And I want to express our gratitude to their work and to their resources. We invited them into the city, I know they wanted to come, but we opened the doors, we fully cooperated with the investigation. The behavior cited in the report is unacceptable, and we must and we will do better. Any one of the instances in the violation of public trust and constitutional rights, we must do better. As a city, we are committed to holding our officers accountable, ensuring that these issues are addressed and making necessary changes to protect the rights and safety of all Trenton residents. But I also want to say that during this last week, I walked down the streets of Chestnut, Randall, Jersey Home, and I talked with the residents. And they would pull me out on the porch and they would say, look at this street. And invariably, they'd say, where are the police? They'd also say, there's a drug dealer down the street, when are you going to get rid of them? My neighbor is throwing garbage over the porch. They're speeding cars down our street, when are you going to put speed bumps? Where's the patrols? So we have to balance things, there is a need for police in this, in this city. Today, there was a shooting on Maple Avenue. And I said, that's in a residential neighborhood, usually quiet, but there was a shooting today. Somebody got shot, somebody's in the hospital in critical condition. Where are the police? And again, there's no excuse for violating persons' constitutional rights, but they are a necessary entity in this city. And let's talk about Steve Wilson. Again, these problems didn't start under Steve Wilson. But what Steve Wilson did was disband the two units that were mentioned in this report. He also was the one who shepherded the street teams and merged them with the police department. He also initiated Arrive Together, so that there is mental health counseling that will arrive with the police. These are necessary reforms. We have a lot of work to do with IA, but he was the one who also started with reconstituting the IA, making sure that they did the reports right, make sure they keep the data. And those changes will still continue. But the two major, well, the three major recommendations, one is IA, is training. Right now, police officers receive internet training. And we all know what, you look at a desk, if you take a class, you could leave and then come back and then sign out that you've watched the video. We need in-person training. And to reinforce that, and Steve Wilson is committed to making that happen. It is right that we need the resources. DCA gave Camden Police all the resources they need, they gave Atlantic City all the resources they need. They need to give resources to the capital city. And supervision. You can't just have patrols just going out with not the sergeants coming out for field supervision. You have to have the captains go out there, you have to have the lieutenants go out there. And we're committing to making these changes. So again, these problems didn't happen overnight, but we're the ones who are committed to making the changes. We will be taking part with DOJ to have community meetings. We will have the discussion as Councilwoman Edwards, and I know Councilwoman Feliciano spoke about having a citizens' review board. You just don't create one, but you have to give that resources as well. You need subpoena power, you need staffing, you need interviews of witnesses. So that's going to take resources, so we're going to have to work together for that. But I will disagree that there has been no impact by Director Wilson. Couple of years ago, he's only been here for a little, almost three years. Couple of years ago, we had 40 homicides. So far up to today, we've had 18. So the homicides have declined, down 55% since 2020. So we have to be doing something right. And the public demands that the police go out there. And you know, they say, there's too many guns out on the street. This year, we confiscated 215 guns. And if we didn't have the police to confiscate them, we can only imagine what would have happened with those guns. So when we go down the street, we want to ensure that our streets are safe, that there's things to do for their kids, that seniors can feel safe to walk to the store, that people can sit on their porch and not have to worry about their safety. We have to take this realistically, we are taking it seriously. It is deeply troubling, the instances that were cited in the report, we have to do better. But in order to do that, we have to make sure that IA, the Internal Affairs Unit, is doing their job, that there is in-person training for the police officers so that they protect the constitutional rights as well as enforce the laws. And we need the supervision out in the streets. So I'm going to turn this over, if I may, to Director Wilson to address the council. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
Good evening, Council, Steve Wilson, Police Director. First off, I just want everybody to note, I do take this DOJ report very seriously. That's first and foremost. Second, I'd like everyone to know that when this DOJ investigation happened, I immediately started making changes. And I had been making changes since before the DOJ was even, came to the city of Trent. So I'd like to thank them for the report. It was very eye-opening. We had already enacted a number of the DOJ recommendations, and will continue to do so, just like the mayor said. They pointed out a lot of procedural and training deficiencies. One of the first things I did was go from an internal affairs unit, and I created the Internal Affairs Bureau, consisting of professional standards, human resources, and training, as well as the internal affairs function. Now the benefits of creating this bureau was to better address citizen complaints, more accountability for supervisors and officers, also put more sergeants were transferred into the Internal Affairs Bureau, so we wouldn't have the same rank investigating the officers. Rather, we would have a supervisor investigating them. It's my intention to completely put sergeants in there to get rid of all the detectives, but it's a manpower issue. Our use of force policy has already been revised for consistency with the New Jersey General's Office Use of Force Policy. Policies governing BWC, which is our body worn camera, and use of force will be further revised based on the DOJ report and suggestions. These changes will make immediate supervisors more accountable for the actions of the officers under their command. The Internal Affairs Bureau now reviews all use of force reports and body worn cameras. This was a revision already instituted prior to the report. The BWC policy will indicate progressive discipline for failure to comply and will indicate progressive discipline for supervisors failing to supervise. I want to especially highlight our citizen complaint process. We are revising and updating the TBD website to make the complaint process more easily accessible and user-friendly. This is also something I did before the DOJ report. The complaint process is available in 11 different languages online on trentonpolice.com. We have and will continue to remind the public of the citizen complaint process at all community meetings. And if you've been there, you know that I've done that. And you can always, I want to remind everybody, submit complaints anonymously. Our training aspect. Arrest, search, and seizure training was instituted with the Mercer County Prosecutor's Office and will continue. We are presently considering potential resources to conduct additional training for de-escalation coupled with use of force training. More importantly, we will put a greater emphasis on supervisor responsibility and accountability to stimulate greater oversight and guidance for our officers on the street. As far as community engagement, I regularly engage with the public by attending community meetings and establishing relationship with clergy and as many community members as I can. Our Community Affairs Unit is more highly engaged than it has been in past years. Our community affairs unit is more highly engaged than it has been in past years when I was here as an officer. One of the, uh, community groups that the mayor forgot to mention was Recovery Advocates. And yes, that occurred under me, as well as the Trenton Community Street Teams and Arrive Together, because I realized the importance of these groups. And I did that when I first got here and will continue to do so and continue to lobby for the funding for our Trenton Community Street Teams. It is very important that the police department establishes relationships, and I recognize that a long time ago. The people of Trenton deserve to be safe, but they also need to know that the police protecting them are doing that important and often dangerous work while respecting their constitutional rights. I and the leadership of TPD are committed to making the department one that the capital city deserves. Working with the DOJ, the New Jersey General General, other stakeholders, including community groups within the city, we will strive to make the changes needed to strike the balance the mayor indicated. Some of my proposed measures to address the DOJ report. Internal Affairs shall make every effort to interview the complainant, particularly using the contact provided. If the complainant fails to follow up, Internal Affairs must document the reasons for non-contact if available. In addition to mail notifications, Internal Affairs should attempt to contact the complainant through secondary means. If the complainant is unavailable or unwilling to cooperate, Internal Affairs must proceed with an independent investigation using other witnesses, including those identified in the report or accompanying officers to assess the validity of the complaint. TPD shall ensure all complaints are received and reviewed. Any language that may have discouraged the complaint procedure will be removed. Internal Affairs shall conduct a comprehensive review of all complaints and classify those complaints in accordance with the most accurate and complete categorization. Trenton Police Department shall provide annual in-person training, particularly with patrol officers or, or others who primarily deal with the public, make, and make every effort with the city administration utilizing budgetary or grant funding to conduct such training in person. Trenton Police Department shall update its internal affairs investigation policies to ensure full compliance with Attorney General guidelines. The updated policy should include clear procedures for handling investigations and reporting of complaints. Annual performance evaluations for all superior officers must, must be conducted for the officers and supervisors within their ranks. The evaluation should include written or oral reviews, fully documented, outlining areas of performance, including strengths and areas of improvement and any misconduct. Superior officers above the rank of sergeant are, will be required to conduct on-scene supervision whenever possible and provide oversight of their field units on a regular basis. This supervision must be documented. Field sergeants are expected to conduct daily field investigations and ensure compliance with departmental policies. Supervisors shall identify and address violations of the body worn camera policy. Officers found to be in violation will face disciplinary action. Supervisors that fail to address known violations will also face disciplinary action. This is also something that has been going on. Internal Affairs will continue to maintain records on all uses of force and take steps to identify and address instances of non-reporting. All uses of force should be documented accurately and reviewed regularly to ensure compliance with department policies. All officers on every level are expected to act in compliance with the laws of the state of New Jersey, the New Jersey Constitution, the US Constitution, and the directives and guidelines of the Attorney General in order to safeguard the rights of our residents. Trenton Police Department and Internal Affairs shall provide regular updates on internal affairs investigations and outcomes, included but not limited to hosting community meetings to discuss police policies and practices. This is to help foster public trust and provide opportunities for residents to voice concerns directly to police leadership. To enhance training and supervision, Trenton Police Department shall institute a program to mentor new officers or those struggling with performance issues. Such mentorship programs are designed to support ongoing professional development and improve officer performance on the street. I want to comment on that. I created a new field training officer program here because I saw that the lack of training for new officers, that was also done prior to DOJ coming here. I saw that deficiency and I addressed it. Trenton Police Department must implement regular audits or data analysis on misconduct complaints, use of force, traffic stops, and other policing metrics. By analyzing trends and patterns, the department can proactively address issues and ensure continuous improvement in service and delivery. That is something that's also directed by the Attorney General. Thank you.
On your call, Madam President.
So at this time, do any council members have any questions for the mayor, for the police director before we close out?
Madam President?
Yes, Councilwoman Edwards.
I do have questions for the mayor.
Okay.
Forgive me. My computer locked on me. Okay. But first of all, I want to say thank you for coming to council to address us and the public in regards to the DOJ report.
Thank you for inviting me.
Of course, of course. As you know, this was something pertinent to the community to hear from you, so I respect you for that. I want to say, or ask, on behalf of several people that I have spoke with, what, what mechanisms are in place to hold the police director accountable for this pattern of misconduct? I hear and I do understand that a lot of these issues definitely existed long before he became director and yourself as mayor as well, but there were a lot of things that happened under his leadership that have gone, how can I say, without any accountability. We have had several police murders and injuries, excessive force and things like that, but I don't see any type of accountability. It's, we need more training and things like that. And I do agree, we need training. I'm like one of the number one people that came in here from day one focused on training because we need it, but it's not enough, echoing the sentiments of Councilwoman Figaro Kattonberg. It's not enough. And we do need those other partnerships with the mental health services and things like that, especially given the guy that was murdered by police officers. And that brings me to my point where those officers, they did not, they were not held accountable for this. They were still here. Some of them are still here to this day. And correct me if I'm wrong, but...
I, I don't think he's there anymore. And we referred the matter to the Attorney General, the New Jersey Attorney General, who's investigated that incident. So that is with the Attorney General's Office. We can't interfere with their investigation. And unfortunately, investigations by the Attorney General Office can take years, but it has been referred to them. And that was one of the reasons why we, we brought on Arrive Together, where mental health counselors are going to come, whether it's domestic violence or whether it's with a mental patient. And you, it's unexcusable what ultimately happened, but at the time when the officer was confronted with someone who was in the crisis center and then left and went in the parking lot, the thought process, and I'm not excusing his behavior, but the thought process is that he was going to run into the street and be in danger to himself or others. But right now, we have instituted, under Steve Wilson's leadership, Arrive Together, where we're correcting that, where when there is a mental health crisis, a mental health counselor should arrive with the police. And he's had discussions with Capitol Health to, to have that, um, put in place.
Council, if I could expand on that response in terms of just the process, not the specifics of specific acts. Whenever a use of force comes to the law department's attention that is in question, we review it. That is sent with 100% accuracy to the prosecutor's office for them to do an investigation. So anytime there is a complaint that's brought to my attention, the law department's attention about that, it is referred to the prosecutor's office. The case that you're talking about was referred to the prosecutor's office, as well as other matters that have come to the law department's attention. We wait for them to make their decision. When it comes back, the answer will be they're either going to pursue charges or to handle it administratively. If it comes back with that type of handle it administratively, it is then sent back to IA for them to initiate the disciplinary process whereby there's a hearing before a hearing officer. The administration, the police will put on their respective cases, the officer will put on their defenses. The hearing officer will make a recommendation. It's an independent law firm hearing officer, not someone internal. The attorney will make a recommendation of discipline. That discipline is either accepted or revised by the administration. 99% of the time, it's accepted in its totality, at which point in time, if any party is not happy with the recommendation and adoption of that discipline, they then have the ability to appeal that to the Office of Administrative Law, where there's a de novo trial and an administrative law judge will make a determination with respect to the amount of discipline, if at all. That's the process for investigating that. With respect to, you know, recourse for any director, including the police director, as you know, there's the rice provision. You have the ability and you have investigatory power to issue someone a rice notice, bring them before this body, ask them questions you would like to have answered, make your own evaluation as to the, the accuracy and the sufficiency of that answer. And that's part of this body's investigatory capacity. So that's, that's, I think, your answer for both questions.
I appreciate that, Director. Thank you. And as a council member, I definitely want to do that. I would love to rice the police director and dive deeper into the issues of the police department, particularly with Internal Affairs Department and the corruption that we have been experiencing there. There's too much nepotism. There's too much conflict of interest. There's relationships that go deep with the police director. And I don't feel like they're giving adequate, how can I say, recommendations of, of just accountability for the things that are happening. There has been indecent exposure and police officers are still employed. They have not been terminated. They have not, they've given slaps on the wrist, but the people that they are violating, the people they work with, they still have to work with this person, these people.
You're, you're taking the right course, and I think that you should have that lengthy discussion. And, and when the NAACP talked about you had the subpoena power, you should have those executive sessions where you can look at the reports and for your, and make that judgment for yourself.
Absolutely. I think this police department needs to be cleaned up, and I think that there needs to be a firmer hand with, from our director on our police officers, on all of the incidents that are happening internally as well as to our residents. And there's a lot going on that is going, that is being swept under the rug. And I'm not sure if you're aware of a lot of these things. I know a lot of our police officers, well, I'm not going to say a lot, but many of our police officers are scared of retaliation, scared to report these things. And the ones that have reported wrongdoings from other officers have been retaliated against. They have been moved to other units. They have been moved to other shifts that do not coincide with their livelihoods, with their children, with their spouses, with themselves. And that is unfair for issues to go unresolved, to just move someone to another unit or to another shift does not resolve the problem. The problem is still there. And that's where my concern is, because if morale is low in our police department, then our people are not safe. So I personally need answers from our police department, our police director. With all due respect, Mayor, I feel like he needs to be stronger. And he has not exemplified strength.
I, I also want to, that, that is also being addressed. We are now, the majority of the police force is minority makeup, and we elevated the first two African females to be lieutenants. And I think when I first started, the majority of the hierarchy was white. That is no longer the case. And that, again, is also due to Director Wilson's involvement.
Council Vice President?
Good evening, Mayor. A couple of things I just wanted to address really quickly. One, thank you for acknowledging, you know, walking the beat and seeing, you know, the conditions, the plural conditions of our neighborhoods, as we know, that adds to the attitude, the culture of our residents and our police officers and, and how we react to law enforcement, how we react to anything that is ordinance-related or law-abiding because we feel like our rights are being violated on a daily basis because we don't get the quality of life that we deserve here in the city of Trenton. So, you know, when, you know, when we're faced with police officers trying to correct actions, we're also wondering, well, what about my rights over here as a taxpaying citizen or as a resident and things of that nature? So we need to tighten that up. So I appreciate you acknowledging that. And that is something, me as a councilwoman, is constantly trying to hold directors of departments accountable for their roles in, for multiple departments throughout the city. I want to just shift gears, though. I don't want to steer clear from the police brutality and the deaths and things of that nature. As we know, that's, that's prevalent. That's an issue that needs to be addressed. Again, that's a nationwide issue as well as locally, and it needs to be stopped. But I also want to kind of talk about the practicality. When we're talking about so many instances of police brutality, of inappropriate policing throughout the city, we can't ignore the cost to the city. We need to start talking about what this is going to cost us in lawsuits, what this is costing us in having officers suspended with pay during investigations, what it costs us in having officers suspended without pay during investigations. Clearly, we don't have the funds in the city of Trenton for that, and we need to start tightening up our shift to know that these things just cannot continue. Because when we have an officer, even if they're suspended without pay, that is a spot that is not open for policing in the city of Trenton. That is an officer not on the beat, an officer not able to walk the beat because we are still paying for not paying that officer. We're not filling that position.
We're about 50 officers down where we need to be. So I don't disagree that if we take a police officer off the beat, that's even more that, that we're down. We do have to follow civil service rules. We do have to follow union grievance procedures. So it's more complicated than we could just make a, a decision right, right off the bat. But, and, and I don't mean to interrupt you, but this is part of the reason why it's critical that, that we have in-person training so that it's reinforced to the officers to adhere to constitutional rights of the citizens, but also fulfill their duty to serve and protect the, the public.
Yeah, respectfully, Mayor, that, that, that comment was not geared towards filling those positions right away with civil service. It was more so, this is taking away from our safety and our city and, and what we're here to do. And that's why we have to nip these things in the bud so we don't have all these issues constantly where we have officers out for investigations. And then, as Councilwoman Edwards said, it's like a slap on the wrist and they're just back on the force as if nothing happened. And now they, they're almost in a more retaliatory mentality once they go back on the beat because now they've been slapped on the wrist for something and, and they got away with it, and now they're back on that beat. So, and really quick before you answer that, and I just want to also address, have we thought about what this is going to cost us? This DOJ report that came out, this investigation, what is it going to cost this city? Because I, I would assume a lot of cases of police brutality are going to be reopened. Lawyers are going to have a field day reopening cases that were settled or closed or what have you because of this DOJ investigation. And what, what preparations are we taking for that?
Well, we're working with the law department to see what, there are statute limitations on, on reopening cases, and we'd have to look to see what, what cases are involved. But we're, we're doing that as well. The cost of one homicide, it's been estimated to cost a community between $9 and $17 million. So the loss of life and the loss of economic benefits and the, the degradation of the community, the loss of property values, the fact that homeowner's insurance goes up. So we also have to balance. Not only do we have to protect constitutional rights, but we have to protect the neighborhoods. The gentleman that said... The gentleman that said, oh, we don't have a, a community unless we have public safety, but we also have to have the public's trust and cooperation, because they're critical to helping us solve crimes.
Thank you, Mayor.
Councilwoman Williams? Oh, I'm sorry. Okay, so after Councilwoman Williams, it'll be Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Okay. Thank you very much, Council President. Thank you, Mayor. Also, thank you Director Wilson for speaking to us tonight. I know you're both well aware of the concerns, many, many, many folks have in the city regarding what's in their report and their own lifetime experiences. So I have a few questions. First one's for the mayor, and I realize that you may not be able to share information on this, but I'm hopeful that you can. Can you share any information on discussions with the Department of Justice or DCA for additional funding for instituting the reforms that are recommended and modernizing our Trenton Police Department?
That's a yes or and no at the same time. Yes, we've, we've put them, we've put them on notice that we need the resources to implement many of the reforms that they've requested. We have expressed the willingness to enact those reforms, but we need the resources.
Including, I know there's some desired modernization purchases that would be, need to be made, et cetera, services. Do you have a rough idea of how much money we're talking for that and the reforms?
No, but we're in the process of, of calculating that so that we can have those fruitful discussions with both DCA and the DOJ.
Okay. Thank you. Regarding, this is for you and the director potentially, one of the very frustrating things as, as being on council, and this was before the report, is, you know, learning actually how hard it is, or it seems, to fire a police officer for excessive force, other violations, or, you know, particularly in reading about violating constitutional rights. So can you explain why that is so hard? Is it union rules? I mean, I know you mentioned civil service, but it just seems to a lot of us, if you're going to violate someone's constitutional rights, you have no place on the force.
Council President, might I jump in on that for Councilwoman Williams? Yeah, it's, it's really follows the statutory process for civil service employment. If there is an allegation of misconduct, police, civil servant misconduct, there's an investigation should be done. Again, if there's a thought that it could potentially result in criminal charges, it is sent to the prosecutor's office, Attorney General's office. An investigation is done, and if there is enough evidence warranting dismissal of an employee or officer, a hearing is held to discipline. Now, there is also, not to go too granular, but there's also a principle called progressive discipline, where for not egregious crimes, you have to give warnings and then serve a minor and a major, but that's not this positive. There are certain crimes, there are certain actions that are egregious enough that you can bypass progressive discipline or right determination. So it's essentially giving someone the right to, a notice of the charges against them, a right to be heard, and engaging in an administrative hearing, making a decision, and then following the same process we discussed a short time ago, where if the employee or the employee is not happy with the discipline it's had, they have a right, they have a right to appeal that to the Office of Administrative Law. There's a de novo trial, and the administrative law judge will make a, the decision with respect to if discipline is proper and if the amount of discipline given was also adequate and proper.
Thank you, Director. As far as a timeline plan with goals, I know this is not something that's, it can't be done in just a few weeks, as much as we all would like to hear a plan. How soon do you think we might be able to have a presentation on what reforms are going to be achieved, maybe within the next 90 days?
Well, I think the Director outlined, I think there are 13 points of measures that the police are taking, but he also noted, much of that has been already implemented. I understand the DOJ was in town today and even acknowledged that Trenton Police were enacting some of the recommendations. So that plan is already in process, but the Director outlined those 13 issues. We can send you a copy of them.
I appreciate that, and I did attentively listen to what he had to say, and I was pleased by much of what I heard.
And they followed the DOJ recommendations.
Yes, and if we could get a status on maybe where we land on that, maybe in the next 30 to 60 days, that would be good, just so people feel that they're informed of how progress is being made.
Absolutely, Councilwoman. Thank you for that question.
Thank you, Mayor. And my final question for the Director, and I, I get back to my comments about if he's already considering, or leadership's considering how to get more officers out of their cars and walking beats in some of our neighborhoods. I'd like to hear if there's any thoughts on that.
Thank you for the question, Councilwoman. So we all would like to have foot patrols. We had them before in the past, but we had 145 more police officers in the past when we had foot patrols. We are currently down to 237 police officers here, which is near the layoff numbers of Without having the extra officers here to perform foot patrols or the, the foot beat that everybody would like, response times, if I were to do that now, response times would go way down. We already have complaints about the response times, because we have to service the city based on priority calls, which means they are, they're designated as ones, twos, and threes, which are violent, violent calls first, down to the criminal mischief, which would be a lower priority call. If we put footposts out now, it would not be strategic to our response times, it would not allow officers to readily be able to move about the city quicker to respond to our more violent crimes. But currently, with our new recruiting efforts, I hope to replace all the vacancies that we have. We have 48 vacancies currently, and that's just a number of 288 budgeted positions for the police department, when that number used to be 375. So I'm tasked with doing more with less, and, and we're doing as best we can. The mayor quoted some of the statistics that the, the police department has produced under this very much decreased manpower, but I'll elaborate a little bit more. Working in conjunction with the Mers County Prosecutor's Office, our clearance rates for homicides are 89% currently. Our clearance rates for shootings are 71% currently. And that's with this discrete decreased manpower. So I would love to be able to put footposts out, but that's a man, that is definitely a manpower issue.
And Director, my final question would be, just because the way you explained it, and I greatly appreciate, because I think it's enlightening for a lot of folks, it is for me. For us to be able to have footposts and have neighborhood beats, would you need to get back to the 375 number? Or is there a number that would be different than it used to be, like 10, 12 years ago when we had the layoffs?
375 would be great, but I don't know that the city's in a position to do that without help, outside help from the state. I could, I could give back a traffic unit, I could give footposts, like, there's a whole lot I could do with a lot of manpower, and it's not, it doesn't revolve around overpolicing, but providing proper police coverage for the, the complaints. One of our biggest complaints is traffic control, speeding and so forth, but I would love to have a traffic unit to do that. But we're, we're increasingly restricted on what we can, we can do.
Well, I hope our partners at the state are listening attentively themselves. Thank you very much, sir, and thank you, Mayor, for your speaking tonight.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Gonzalez?
Thank you, Council President. Director, I just had a couple of questions. Some of them have already been addressed as far as the timeframe of the goals and some of the resources. As we all know, it is going to take resources to implement some of these, the plan that you did speak on, but I wanted to ask one, two, a couple of questions. As far as the plan that you have spoken about, has that been shared with the department and the officers, communicated to their supervisors or however it is that you all meet within the department?
Well, currently, I do have a command staff meeting every morning at 10 o'clock. The, the parts of this that I've instituted already, everybody's well aware of those things. Yeah.
And then I, I think I heard you say that two, or, or maybe the mayor said it, two of the, the units that were highlighted in the report have been dismantled?
Yes.
So where did those officers go?
They were reabsorbed back into the patrol function.
And are they going to, well, hopefully, the whole department's going to be trained, but I just want to see if they've been placed in other areas, are they getting the proper training and, you know, that they need to be out on the streets again?
Yes, that's part of the training that we're receiving from Mers County Prosecutor's Office for arrest, search, and seizure.
Thank you. Thank you, Director. That was all.
Okay.
Councilwoman Frisbee?
Thank you, Madam President. So one, I want to thank you for the information, and one, thank you and the mayor for coming out today. I think this is needed, the community needed to hear from you directly, they needed to hear from our mayor directly. A lot of questions have been posed to us as council that we weren't, not able to respond to. So I appreciate this. One of the questions that I did want to ask you, I did hear Lieutenant, Sergeant Woodhead, he touched on this, and so did you, about having open forums, open meetings. When will we be looking at having those instituted?
I believe the DOJ was talking to our law, law office, and they're going to start scheduling the community meeting soon.
Okay. So, thank you. And just so that the public knows, there are meetings that a lot of, we have monthly. So, and our police officers are there at all of those meetings. So I know that I have one that's coming up this Tuesday, I know that the other, my other colleagues, they do as well, so we ask you to just check, call in, and reach out to us, but our police officers are there. You have questions, you have more questions beyond tonight that you need answered, there are opportunities to get to them before we get to having the, them starting their own open meetings and forums. So I just want to say thank you for that, and again, I invite the public to come out to those. Thank you.
Councilwoman?
Thank you, Council President.
So in listening to everything, there was, there was a lot of different commentary that was, that was brought forward, but there was a part, you know, we all keep going back to DCA and the funding, and DCA and the funding, and we know that we need DCA to give us the money. And I do, along with the mayor, advocate for Trenton to receive more money. But it still goes even deeper than that, because you still have to fix the problem, even if you don't get the money. And so we cannot, we cannot blame DCA for everything. While they do leave Trenton short in some aspects, I do believe that, right? I feel like our hands are tied, to be honest, right? One governmental unit requires us to do one thing, and then DCA says, we're not giving you the money to do it. And so now we get these bad reports, and people are looking at the city like we're crazy, but DCA and, and DEP and everybody else, if they just get on the same page, then we would kind of be all right, almost like we're just fighting a losing battle. The, the police officers that are doing the wrong things, that have done the wrong things, that needs to be addressed, regardless of the funds that we do or do not get. And that's internal, that's internal. That is having the hard conversations, that is making those tough decisions, that is saying, what you have done is wrong, we are not dealing with this, and it will not be tolerated. You cannot just go out here and be sifted or put into another unit. You're still out here, but nothing has been done to change the actions of what we're done, except we're just moving you from here to there. Things have to change, and this is throughout the entire city. This is throughout all of the departments in the city of Trenton. People that work here have to be accountable to the people that live here. We have to be, all of us have to be accountable, right? Everyone has to be accountable, everyone has to do their fair share, everyone has to show up and do the work that is required of them to do, and if they don't want to do it, then they don't need to be here. I love the residents, I love the people, teach their kids. We teach responsibility and accountability on a serious level. It's not about friendship, it's not about family, it's about what's right for the people. The officers that did wrong, on any level, no one should ever get a free pass on doing wrong to anyone. They should not. Everyone should be, should be dealt with, and I think, and I'm going to say, I'm going to say this, right? Because, again, I was asked to help out, to advocate for DCA to do more. I need help to advocate that the officers do right. So don't come to me, not you, I'm just, we talking now, right? Don't come to me and tell me what I need to do to help a situation that somehow it has been manifested internally. Some things y'all got to fix. It's that mentality, it's that, it's that elitist mentality that some do have, that just because you're in a position of authority with a badge, that you think that it's okay to express these, these actions towards people just simply because you can. You take an oath to protect and serve, you need to do that all the time, every time. If you need time off because you stressed out, you need to get that. Y'all need to negotiate that. You sit in your union negotiations, figure it out. But on the other end of this, right? Internal management matters on all levels. Everybody needs training, everybody, management on down. And I've said that from when I first sat up in here on this council. It starts at the top, and it works his way down. Some of these officers, they should be put out, period. See, you start impacting people when you get in their pockets and you mess with their money. That's where you start getting people's attention and letting them understand what we will and we will not tolerate. And again, for the good officers and the great officers, thank you. Thank you for doing what it is you supposed to do, right? But for those that are not, for those that violate, for those that sit and do what it is they do simply because they can do it, or I had a bad day, or because you black or Latino or whatever, right? Like, people say, all the reports say it wasn't racially motivated. Hell, Trenton is, how many blacks and Latinos make up the town? Of course you ain't going to say that. We here. You got to do right, and y'all got to demand right, because we're demanding that you demand right, because the citizens of Trenton deserve better. And I want to feel safe as I ride through the town, and I don't want to feel safe just because I'm Councilwoman, Council President Feliciano. I want you to respect me because I am a woman and that I deserve to be treated fairly, not because I'm sitting in the position. Respect all of us equally, and if people cannot do that, then they need to go. They need to go. Director, thank you for coming forward and for laying out your 13 points tonight. We appreciate everything, and we look forward to seeing some things being implemented, and we are going to look into whatever we need to look into to, to dive a little bit deeper. Mayor, thank you so much for accepting my invitation to come to council and speak, right? And to let the people hear. And then to those that came and spoke, thank you for coming out and, and speaking, but we felt that it was important to give the people the opportunity to come and say something, because they need to be heard, and that's just where we are.
I agree. And Councilwoman, thank you for organizing this, for inviting us. I especially want to thank the public for coming out, their, their- And I especially want to thank the public for coming out. They're passionate. And this is very disconcerting to listen to some of the anecdotes that were here. And I know Councilwoman Edwards is very passionate about this issue. And this is an opportunity to resolve this once and for all. I mean, they talked about things that started in nineteen ninety-three, nineteen ninety-nine. Well, this is twenty twenty-four, and we have an opportunity to correct this. And we are making that progress. And just, I think there are good things to come out of this department and this director still. We still have work to do. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mayor, I have one more question before we close out tonight. Trenton Water Works. So we see everything and the reports and the employee and the testing and everything that happened. Would you like to address the council, the public about Trenton Water Works?
Yeah, this is, this is a horrible situation and that should not be tolerated. That person was in fact terminated. What you should understand is that there were three testers. So one of them was fraudulently reporting back. There were two others. At no time did DEP determine that they also fraudulently prepared their reports. There's also hourly testing at the filtration plant that is being conducted. No time did DEP demonstrate that that was fraudulent. Nonetheless, they threw out the whole year as a punishment to the city of Trenton. And maybe we deserved it. But at no time was it demonstrated that the water did not meet safe drinking standards. It's unfortunate that, that one individual out of a hundred and fifteen plus employees has really put a dark cloud over, over the Trenton Water Works. We've made vast improvements over the last six, six years. We have super pulsators that are not, that are working now that were not working before. That's the intake valve in the Delaware. We're doing lead service line replacements. We're replacing the reservoir that was ordered by, by DEP about fifty years ago to replace. We're doing that. We're putting in water tanks to disperse the water throughout the service municipalities. We're putting in smart meters so that you don't have to get a knock on your door to read your meter. They'll be read automatically. So there are many improvements that are happening. One employee, though, has really taken down this department, and it's, and it's awful. We're working with DEP. We're working with EPA. DEP has acknowledged that improvements have been made. They want us to go further. A lot of it is staffing and a lot of it is resources. The supplemental order that the commissioner just issued is giving us that middle and top management to fill those vacancy spots. So we're working with DEP. They're going to foot the bill and, and fill those gaps that we need. It's really hard for the city of Trenton, we're a distressed city, for us to hire water personnel that another town or another more affluent community can hire. It's tough to attract the talent and the expertise we need to keep running the water department. So with the DEP, we're going to be filling those spots. There's an RFP that was issued by DEP. It's returnable on January fifteenth, and we're looking to fill those gaps. We've also implemented safeguards with water testing. We're putting GPS trackers in the water cars to make sure that they're going to the test sites. We're also requiring them, they take pics from their phone when they're taking the tests. And we have supervisors going out, spot checking to make sure that they're, they're testing the water. So again, we're making reforms. It is a completely unfortunate situation. But like police, we're, we're taking on the challenges head on. It may not be quick enough, but we have, we're working with the police. We're working with DOJ and the Attorney General's Office and the County Prosecutor's Office. With the water, we're working with DEP and in some instances EPA.
And just real quick, was firing the only measure we could have done? Like, that was theft of time and like money and all of that kind of stuff, like? Is that, is the city, could the city?
We believe that that was criminal conduct. We referred the matter to the County Prosecutor's Office.
Yeah, I was going to say, if I may, Council President, just for the body's benefit, that was something that was discovered internally as a result of the investigation. When, when that was brought to the administration's attention, that case was immediately referred to the prosecutor's office. We got acknowledgement, acknowledgement emailed back saying they acknowledged that they received it and were looking into it. Nevertheless, we started the administrative process for termination. But that is another example of when we have an investigation and it's determined that there's a possibility of submit for pride, it's always, it's forwarded as a matter of course, every time.
And I might add that the reason this person was caught was a Good Samaritan neighbor called us and said that water truck is parked too often in front of this person's house. Not DEP, but TW, Trenton Water Works investigated. And we found out that he was indeed not showing up for work, parking his vehicle in front of his house. We contacted DEP. We contacted the County Prosecutor's Office. It's when they then did the more larger investigation that they somehow determined that he was, whether they had direct evidence or not, they put it as a year period that he was fraudulently filling out his, the sheets rather than simply taking the sample and bringing it back to the lab. But again, there were two other testers, so there were other test sites. There, and the filtration tests on the hour, hourly. But this was reported by the city and that, that employee was terminated.
So for him to have done this for over a year, like?
We don't know. DEP set that period and said, we are not recognizing a year's worth of testing.
So then I wonder what the oversight mechanisms then were when it came to management and these people out and about, right? So how do you just sign off on stuff and people are verifying time and not even knowing that this is not even?
Well, water testers go out, they go to the sites, they, they take the sample, and then they're required to then analyze it.
Right.
And this person was just filling out the sheets and putting arbitrary numbers. But there were two other water takers and two, and different sites taking the water samples and the filtration plant itself was testing. So we've also enacted safeguards. Who would have thunk that, you know, a water tester decided not to show up for work? We're doing GPS tracking on their vehicles. We're having supervisors go out, spot check. And we're requiring that when the tester goes to the site, they take a picture with their camera so that there's a recording that they've been indeed. And hopefully while they're out at that site, they'll stick the pool tube in the water and, and take the sample properly. They might as well, they have to show up there.
Thank you, Mayor. Any council members, any questions?
Since we're on that, I just wanted to ask, Mayor, thank you for us, Council President. With regard to the water standards, are the private water companies held to the same standard by DEP as Trenton is?
They are, and, and you can Google other private companies and they, they have environmental hiccups just like we do. I will tell you, their rates are higher and by all means, Google that as well. But for simply to just privatize this water company, one, when, when it's a private company running, there's a disinvestment, well, disincentive to make those costly improvements. But if they are making all the improvements that we're doing, they're going to charge accordingly for those rates. So we are working with DEP. We're working with our service communities. We want to have a trust and a reputation that we deliver water. I know that pizza parlors like our water, bagel stores like our water, and I still drink the water as well.
Thank you, Mayor. And again, Trenton Water is not for sale.
That's right.
And that's up to you that you would have to be the first stop on that train.
Any other council people have anything for the mayor about Trenton Water Works? We good? Councilwoman Williams, go ahead.
We can ignore her. She's not here. I thought there's a requirement that you have to be here to actually win the prize.
Right.
I'm still your favorite council person questionnaire, even if I'm out of state, sir.
That's right.
So my, my, just two quick questions. First one is DEP, their reaction towards this? And have they expressed, because I know particularly our, our friends in Hamilton Township complain a lot. I even had an interaction with Mayor Martin at Rutgers back in October as far as any need that they're saying for the state to take a stronger hand in Trenton or take over.
Well, they're not taking over. They're assisting us. And they're recognizing that there's been a systematic neglect by the state of New Jersey. There's a Harvard study that you could read about what the worth of a capital city is, and they use Trenton as an example. And they said that Trenton was the least favored capital city of all the fifty states. DEP recognizes that, and they want to help us fulfill the ranks that we need to properly run the, the water department. We acknowledge that there are systematic failures, but we're all working on that. And for, and the upgrades that I mentioned, they're taking place, and we are making improvements. But it also takes resources, and we're doing it.
Thank you. And can you inform us where we stand on starting the process of building the water towers and closing down the reservoir? And how the timeframe they lay out for that?
As we speak, you could drive up to Prospect where there was an old laundromat facility, and that was torn down. We're building water tanks there. We did have hiccups with service municipalities. Some were willing participants to site a water tower there, and others were not in my backyard. I won't mention names, but we have worked out those site issues. But that, that delayed the process some. So some of the service municipalities were not fully cooperative.
So that'll take probably a few more years then.
I would defer to our director, oh, here he is. He knows the timeline for the sighting of the water towers.
Good evening, Director Sample, Trenton Water Works. Good evening, Council President.
Good evening.
Thank you.
So we're hoping to start building the tanks on Prospect Street in the fall of next year, if all goes well with the funding, because these are huge, very expensive projects. This entire reservoir project may go up to over two hundred and fifty million dollars once we get totally done. So we're in that process. So we're going to start sometime early next year with our processes. So y'all will see these bids coming in front of you for approval. So don't be alarmed by the figure.
Thank you very much, Director.
I might also add that the prior council did not approve, we would have started four years ago, that the prior council allowed us to site the water towers there, but wouldn't approve the demolition funding, the necessary demolition funding of that factory. So we could, so it was, yes, you could have water tanks, but good luck building them there. That was the prior wacky council. And I, I, I know that you guys are, are not always on the same page, but I greatly respect each and every one of you, including Councilwoman Williams, that you are asking the tough questions. You're doing your due diligence. You're, you're delving into the, the issues, and we'll make a better city for it. So thank you very much. And I will say that all four ward council people were reelected, and that's reaffirmation by the public that this council is serious about moving the city forward.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right. At this time, can I have a motion to waive civic comment? Can I have a motion to waive civic comment?
Someone second.
Council President, I just have two quick announcements. One of them is time sensitive. If I may.
We have a motion on the floor, unfortunately.
Councilwoman Williams?
At this time, I have to do a roll call. Roll call. Councilwoman Edwards?
Respectfully, no.
Okey dokey. Vice President Figaro Katzenberg?
Yes.
Councilwoman Frisbee?
Yes.
Councilwoman Gonzalez?
Yes.
Councilwoman Williams?
No.
Council President Feliciano?
Yes.
Motion carried. On your call, Madam President.
Could I have a meeting, a motion to adjourn the meeting?
So. Second.
Roll call. Councilwoman Edwards?
No.
Do you know what?
Vice President Figaro Katzenberg.
Council Vice President?
Yes.
Councilwoman Frisbee?
Yes.
Councilwoman Gonzalez?
Yes.
Councilwoman Williams?
Mill Hill Holiday House tours this Saturday from twelve to five. Tickets are available. Artworks.
Councilwoman. Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
Yes.
Everyone, have a good night.
Meeting adjourned at nine?
Yeah, I know y'all going to hear me soon.
Got it.